Good evening. The November 19th, 2024 Regular Meeting of the Mentor Exempted Village Board of Education is called to order. This meeting is being held in accordance with Section 3313.15 of the Ohio Revised Code. Please place your mobile phones on silent mode for the meeting. Mr. Wade, please call the roll.
Ms. Iaplo.
Here.
Ms. Jessling.
Present.
Ms. Marchaza.
Present.
Ms. Payne.
Here.
Ms. Cook.
Here.
Thank you and please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would like to welcome everyone to the November 19th, 2024 Regular Meeting of the Mentor Exempted Village Board of Education. Prior to this evening, each board member has received for their review and consideration the agenda and materials associated with each agenda item for the board's approval via the District's Paperless Board of Education Agenda System Board Docs. The public can access the agenda through the school district's website, and the agenda is available through the district's website for public viewing the Sunday prior to the board meeting. Board members have the opportunity to call the Superintendent and Chief Financial Officer for information concerning agenda items and to request, if needed, additional information. There are two places on the agenda where the board entertains comments from the community. The first hearing of the public is dedicated to those who wish to address the board on agenda items only. The second hearing of the public is dedicated to those who wish to address the board on any subject, whether it be an item on the agenda or another topic. To participate in the Hearing of the Public section, interested speakers must sign up prior to the start of the meeting. Signups are available online through the school district's website or onsite prior to the start of the meeting. You will be called to the microphone when it is your turn to speak, and at that time, we ask that you please state your name and address questions to the board president. Each person may speak only once per segment, and comments are limited to three minutes. The purpose of the Hearing of the Public is for our community members to address the board. The board continues to welcome feedback from the community as an important component to conducting business. This is an information gathering opportunity for the board and administration so we can work to best serve our community. If at the end of the public participation we do not make a statement, please know this does not demonstrate a lack of care for comments shared by our community. Rather, we want to be thoughtful in our approach, and we will provide a response in a timely manner when appropriate. In an effort to maintain an orderly meeting based on Ohio Revised Code 2917.12 and Board Policy 0169.1, any person doing any act which obstructs or interferes with the conduct or orderly progress of the board meeting will be warned and/or removed from the meeting. This meeting is being shown live and can be viewed on demand on our YouTube channel, Cardinal TV Mentor Ohio. Thank you. Because we do not have any district highlights and recognitions this evening, we'll move on to approval of minutes. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes for the October 8th, 2024 Regular Board Meeting?
Madam President, I am moved to approve.
Have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Wade, please call the roll.
Ms. Marchaza.
Yes.
Ms. Jessling.
Yes.
Ms. Iaplo.
Yes.
Ms. Payne.
Obeying.
Ms. Cook.
Yes.
Motion carries 4-0.
Next, we have Hearing of the Public on Agenda Items Only.
Our first speaker is Lynda O'Brien.
Lynda O'Brien, 5842 Tannajer Court, here in Mentor. As you know from some of my prior comments, I conduct a summer camp for children that's a reenactment of the years of the American Revolution through a reenactment process. This year, we had 221 campers. They come as time travelers. They will be entering others somewhere between 2nd grade and 7th grade. 94 of those 221 are from here in Lake County. As the children progress through the week, they make a decision, and if they choose to be an American patriot, they prepare themselves for signing their own copy of the Declaration of Independence with a quill and ink.
Mrs. O'Brien, does this relate to our agenda?
Yes, this is about achievement.
Oh, I'm sorry, thank you.
They are required to read the following pledge. Please listen carefully. They will raise their right hand, and they will say it like this. "I, Lynda O'Brien, do solemnly pledge to honor God, protect my country, and provide for my family. I know that liberty comes from God and that freedom is a precious gift. I promise to stand strong for the values that America was founded on, to treat all as equals, to be grateful for my God-given rights of life, liberty, justice, and the pursuit of happiness." Now, I hope you listened to those words. I administer this to each and every one of the students, and I am really concerned about the fact that a number of our older campers struggled to read every one of those words. As I think about student achievement, I think about that for the past four years coming before you, I have asked you to focus on the basics: reading, writing, and arithmetic. If a 5th grader cannot read this pledge, how well are we teaching reading? That's my question to you. Is there achievement in reading when a 5th grader can't read these basic words? I'm sorry to tell you that I won't be able to stay and listen to your rest of your meeting today, probably that will cover student achievement, because I have to pick up my granddaughter from Christmas pageant rehearsal. But please know, this is a very serious concern of mine and many others, and I'm looking forward to some serious reconstruction and renewal of our educational system after July 20th. I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Madam President, members of the board, Mr. Heath and Mr. Wade, thank you for the opportunity to address you this evening. I would like to speak on an item listed under Unfinished Business on the agenda. It is my understanding that the board always follows the law of the state and federal government. So a separate policy on the ban of trans students using the restroom that agrees with their gender, as proposed in State Senator Serino's Bill 104, is unnecessary and is one more way to single out and hurt some of our students. Trans students face enough pain and discrimination. Our schools need to be a safe space for all students, including them. It is spiteful to pass an unneeded policy on a bill that's not even in effect. As one state senator recently said, "This bill is not about bathrooms. It's about demonizing those who are different, and our children are watching and listening to this fear mongering." This bill has nothing to do with student safety and everything to do with political opportunism, Ohio Federation of Teachers President Melissa Cropper said in a statement. There is no epidemic of student assaults in bathrooms and locker rooms. And it is a poorly considered bill that will bring up huge enforcement issues. It is more than likely going to be litigated. Another reason not to consider an unneeded policy. And finally, do we write policy for every law that's passed in the state of Ohio? I think not, and I don't think we need to for this. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Heath, Mr. Wade, President Cook, and board members. I would like to speak on the items listed under New Business tonight. I have been following the bills that are listed on the agenda for quite some time. I have worked with several organizations across Ohio, members of the House and Senate, and talked with local religious leaders about the strong opposition we have for the two RTRI bills. I am sure tonight you will hear many reasons as to why religious release time is not a good fit for our district, from the safety concerns to the unwanted school day disruptions. I am going to highly encourage you all to watch the testimony given today and last week at the State House on both RTRI bills. There were over 200 submissions for opponent testimony last week, and today, the last I heard this evening, they were still sorting testimony, but the Senate Education Committee had received over 350 pieces of testimony. I am happy to send the link to that testimony later after this meeting. There's a lot of important facts that were shared. What I would like to speak on here tonight is more about why I do not feel religious release time is something we should accept in our district. Right now, the choice to adopt an RTRI policy is up to the local school boards, which is where I strongly believe that should stay. I do believe that there are some districts or cities where this could be beneficial or more easily implemented. This may be an appropriate option for communities with less opportunity for after-school religious programs, fewer local churches, or just fewer religious schools on the list for school choice. However, this is Mentor. Mentor has a wide variety of private schools with religious curriculum. Mentor also has a variety of programs and activities for students who want to place their religion outside of school hours. Within one mile of my own home, there are nine churches. Many of those have multiple different service hours on Sunday, along with several options for weeknight service, and then also have special group events throughout the week. Now with vouchers available to families who do wish to have more religious-based curriculum, there are many options available. Wasn't that the point of school choice? But now, of course, that isn't enough, right? This is unnecessary for many reasons. This discussion tonight is beyond unnecessary, considering the board members who have brought this up for discussion are more than aware of the status of these moving bills. The added topics tonight on the agenda are strictly for performance. It is honestly disgraceful and unfair to our district, to our students, families, and staff. I mean, my goodness, whatever will we have to talk about at the meetings once these bills do become law? Books? No. Threats on a school bus? Nah, those are jokes, right? Perhaps instead of attempting to create a policy about bathrooms or bringing this forward, we could actually try and do something productive, like you're supposed to do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Andrea Bliss.
Good evening. I'm Andrea Bliss on Liberty Street. I have two kids at shore. I'd like to speak on the discussions surrounding the release time religious instruction policies, which appears on this evening's agenda. Even though I, sorry, even though I feel that these discussions, while, I'm so sorry, God, even though I feel that having these discussions, while there are currently bills working their way through the State House, is premature. I believe that religious freedom and religious expression are very important. I also believe that these things are very personal and not something that should be governed or forced into the public sector. While I understand that RTRI policies may soon be required by law, I would urge the board not to act rashly in an attempt to set an example or standard for other districts. I believe our board would be wise to hold off on policy discussions surrounding RTRI until a future date, when the fate of these bills is more clear and the specifics of the bills have been finalized into law. The dangers and risks of RTRI policies as they affect the students of public education are something the board needs to consider at length. Many of our community members have voiced concern over the district's test scores, and I fail to see how allowing one hour per week, if that were to be the allotted timeframe, to be dedicated to religious instruction would serve to improve student performance in school. It actually seems to me that it would lend itself to doing the opposite of that. In our district, the schedules are broken down into blocks of approximately 40 minutes. This means that there would be no way to promise that RTRI programs would be confined to just lunch, recess, study hall, or advisory time. There would, based solely on the current structure of the district's schedules, be overlap into some other course or class period. Additionally, we have many students who are food insecure and rely on the free lunches that they eat at school, so to then devote that lunch period to off-site instruction would be depriving some of our students of a meal that they depend on. It is so important that the board ensure that whatever policy they adopt regarding RTRI not jeopardize our students' abilities to thrive. Finally, the implementation of RTRI policies leaves the door open for outside organizations to step in and interact with our students, which would likely violate our district's policy on special interest groups, which I know is a policy that Mrs. Payne and Mrs. Iaplo feel very strongly about enforcing. Please do not rush to build a policy on this matter, as it has ramifications beyond the risk of violating the guaranteed separation of church and state, as defined in our First Amendment. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you.
Good evening. I am a Mentor Schools parent with kids, actually, in the district, and I am speaking about the agenda item of release time for release religious instruction. I am aware that it may soon be Ohio law. If that happens, I recommend Mentor Public Schools follow suit with other Neola schools such as Berea Public Schools and Toledo City Schools, and deem all classes core classes, which align with Ohio Revised Code 3319.074. It states that core classes are English, language arts, math, science, social studies, foreign language, and fine arts. That leaves lunch and recess, which is 40 minutes long at the elementary school level. I will also argue that eating lunch and expending energy is also essential for our students. The same board members advocating for RTRI have said that they want our teachers to get back to the basics of education. This is not the basics of public education. If you speak to teachers, you will know how precious instructional time is. Every minute counts in the school day. The community has expressed concerns over Mentor School students' literacy rates. The foundation of literacy is built in elementary school. I can't imagine our students' scores will increase with a weekly disruption, especially if they haven't eaten or had recess. There are many options for parents who choose to incorporate religion in their children's lives. There's religious services multiple times a week, including classes for children. There are periocal schools. There's ed choice. All of these choices give parents plenty of opportunities to choose how they incorporate faith into their family. I don't believe the public school system should be included. I personally do not think it's about religion at all. I think the common goal is to disrupt the public sector to decrease proficiency. If it was about religion, there would be an after-school program, not during. I hope you will look into these neighboring Neola schools, and when the time comes, instill a policy that deems all classes are core classes. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Pastor Barb Holshouser. I am an ELCA Lutheran pastor, and I'm retired. I'm here to speak on behalf of many clergy who are not able to speak up because they are currently serving in congregations. The reason I'm here is to voice my opposition to the RTRI and any affiliated groups seeking to bring RTRI into the public education setting, and I have three talking points. The first one has to do with the role of public education. We have to answer the question, what is the responsibility of public education? It's not just about answering that question, but clarifying the purpose of public education that is essential when it comes to RTRI. Public schools are not responsible for carving out time for parents to provide religious instruction to their children. It is the responsibility of the parent to take time to do that. Public education is not responsible for finding that time for parents. Creative ideas for religious instruction have happened throughout history. There are private and church-affiliated schools that were established to include religious instruction. Faith formation materials, known as catechesis, have been provided to families since the beginning of the church, and catechesis was intended to be taught in the home, not by the pastor, the priest, the rabbi, the imam. In addition, when this country was settled, families established Sunday schools before churches were even founded, because there was no clergy. Many of our Sunday schools predate the founding of this country. Therefore, I stand in opposition to RTRI because it's not the responsibility of public education to make it convenient for families to provide religious instruction. Talking point two: belief is a matter of interpretation. What that means is that even within Christianity, what is asserted, emphasized, and taught is not uniform. Christian belief is not a monolith. It exists in a continuum. An RTRI is often used by particular groups who insist on certain beliefs being right, influencing students to accept a particular view as faithful or godly. It is naive to think that students participating in RTRI won't stop, fall into the trap of imposing their beliefs, opinions on others. The result: conflict, bullying, division. Is this what we want for our schools or community?
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Susan Sednik.
Good evening. My name is Susan Sednik. I live at 7539 Little Mountain Road in Mentor. There was a few things I wanted to speak about. One is the, we'll start with the religious release instruction and how that relates to Senate Bill 445. I wanted to say, I think that there's maybe some misconceptions about it. It's really a simple program where you're giving the community, if the community wants this, we should offer it to them, is what I'm saying. It's not requiring anything of public school teachers to take time out of their time. This is completely on the kids' own time. It's something that the parents do decide on for their kids, but it's a choice. You don't have to. If you don't want your kid to go to religious instruction, you certainly don't have to. And I think fear mongering about there's going to be bullying and starving children isn't really a fair argument. I think it's just, if your community wants it, then you should stand behind the community because you're working for the community. I think that helped, you know, the Supreme Court has made this legal. It's nothing out of the ordinary. There are plenty of schools that are doing it. I think we should at least give families the chance to do it if they want. If it doesn't work out, then we don't have to stick with it. But I think it's unfair to demonize it when it could be something very good for kids. And again, it's a choice. If you don't want your kid doing it, you don't have to. Anyway, I just think that that kind of shows a little bit of ignorance and backward thinking if our district does not do that, especially if you have people that want that. The other item I wanted to address is with the Senate Bill 104 and the bathroom bill. I'm just hoping that with the way things are going, that you guys would please adjust your policy to reassure parents that the nonsense about guys in the girls' rooms will be handled. I think a lot of people are under the impression that you guys will just go around the law, and I think that you should make a stand to the community to say that you're going to follow the law and that you care about the safety of girls and women. So I would ask that you do that. Also, I just want to make a quick point here. It's sort of a minor issue, but I just, I wanted to bring it up because I think it shows a little bit of hypocrisy. When you're looking at the recommended acceptance of the following gifts in tonight's agenda, there's a lot of people that have donated goods and services, particularly someone has donated backpacks and lunchboxes. I think that's awesome. What I don't understand is, if we're, people are offering to contribute books, why aren't they allowed to give books, but other people are allowed to do backpacks? I just, I think it's dishonest and disingenuous, but anyway, thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Jennifer Alad. Not seeing Jennifer. Our next speaker is Melanie Majakas.
Good evening. I'll also be speaking on the release time for religious instruction policy tonight. I wanted to make three main points about my concerns about these policies when they are offered by external organizations. The first, and a lot of this has already been covered, you know, the first is really the impact on instructional time in the classroom. It's hard to get through all that needs to be taught in a day as it is, and we know that every subject that students are learning is of educational value and educational benefit, which would make basically the entire school day core curriculum. Since these programs do not allow for students to leave their core classes, that basically leaves lunch and recess every day. And the ability to take students out safely, get them off-site, get them to a program, and get them back to the classroom within that lunch and recess period does not really seem logistically sound. My second point is the disruption to the classroom, but also to the staff that would have to be involved. You can say that it doesn't involve the staff, but it absolutely does, especially in the upper grades. These students are not going to get themselves ready to go by themselves. These students will have to be watched to get on whatever transportation they would need to get on, and they would need to be watched when they come back. That absolutely takes time out of teacher and staff's day, takes their distraction away from the students who stayed in the classroom, also poses a disruption when they come back in. In fact, the Westerville School District outside of Columbus rescinded their religious release time policy earlier this year due to, in part, the level of disruption that was happening when students were coming and going. I personally would not want to be an elementary school teacher with kids coming back who would not have a chance to have recess that day. But most importantly, I want to highlight the significant safety concerns with these programs as well, especially around background checks. For example, there was a religious release time program in the Firelands District in Ohio that actually hired as its program director a former teacher who had been fired and lost her license. her license for inappropriate contact with her students. If their background checks are missing something that obvious, what else are they missing? And are these programs required to share information on the background checks for their program staff and volunteers with the school district? Parents have no assurance of what kind of people they are sending their children to in these programs. There's also just not much information about how these programs would be required, if they even would, to accommodate children with special needs, children with IEPs, children with learning differences, or how those would be handled within these programs. I think with so many questions, so many outstanding questions on how these programs would work, it is premature to say that the district needs a policy at this time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Deanna Skirm.
Hello. My name, my name is Deanna Skirm. I live at 6803 Glen Carent Court, and I have a child at Shore. This is regarding the religious instruction. I want to say on a positive note, on what the board and the schools should be looking at, is worrying about the decline in education due to COVID and how we can gain those gaps. Or worry about test anxiety, not just the kids that are on IEP 504s and have other disabilities. In general, test anxiety, a lot of kids have it. Why don't they include, hey, let's see what your test score is without music in the background, like instrumental? And then take another and say, oh, let's compare these quizzes. We had the music. Like it calms the mind down. That's the kind of stuff we need to implement, not worry about the religious part. And the only positive, like if people want to show, get the kids involved in community and how to be a good kid, how to have good morals, be kind to the other kids that are different, they have special needs. They don't look because a boy wants to dress up as a female. Is that boy hurting, beating up on your other kid, yelling that you would have to have police or the principal involved? No, just acknowledge, hey, how are you? That's all these kids need, not to be like, God's going to punish you. I'm not, I'm Catholic. I am not a deep believer. I have my things and my own rules. The big one upstairs has judgment. None of us can. And with this religious instruction, the Life Wise Academy, it's funded, it's Christian nationalism backed by a lot of money and Betsy DeVos. Now, I know a lot of my family and friends, they did not like her in that position. She's funded this. Also is part of Project 2025, which is former Trump and will be the next president, that is he getting kicked back? I, when I read to see, okay, what, what good can come of this? I didn't see anything. It says, reach out to non-Christians, teach lessons to the unchurched children. No, it's good morals. On page three.
Thank you.
But it's, oh my gosh.
Thank you. Absolutely. Thank you.
The next speaker is Jaclyn McCormick.
Tonight, I'd like to address a few items that are on the agenda. First, I would like to state my support for a policy that would match the recent passage of Senate Bill 104, which prevents biological boys and biological girls from entering any other bathroom or locker room except for those that align with their biological sex or gender-neutral single stalls. If you refuse to create a policy, you will be reaffirming what you have currently in place, which is allowing anyone access to whatever bathroom as long as they identify as that gender that day. Mind you, this is without parental permission. We already have a parent going on news stations and stating to journalists that her son will continue to use the girls' bathroom and will not be using the boys' restroom. What disciplinary measures will you apply if a student breaks this new law? In reference to House Bill 445, the religious time release policy, there should be absolutely no reason why Lauren, Maggie, or Jenny would not support this policy. Your own statements you've made when you defend your decision to retain sexually explicit age-inappropriate books should be enough for you to support this policy. Three of you continuously vote to retain books, talking about how there are more than two genders for our kindergarten through fifth graders, and use the excuse that other parents can decide not to let their children read those books. Along the same lines, you should rebut any parents that are stating that their kids may feel left out when other kids may leave once a week for religious studies for their sincerely held beliefs. When you blast your beliefs all over the walls and encourage children to buy pronoun pins sold at lunchtime by the pride club, and allow teachers to ask students which pronouns they want to go by without their parents consenting, allow for pride and LGBTQ flags to be displayed in classrooms, and allow academic guidance counselors to send emails to their students which include a link in their signature line about pronouns and why students should be asking others for their pronouns, then you should also have no problem with students exercising their right to their religious beliefs, even if they don't match yours. If you don't support this, then you are a hypocrite. Maggie and Jenny, we're keeping score of your votes, and when you're up for reelection next year, we will ensure that our Republican majority doesn't forget. Your votes are visible, and Cook and Jessling, you are far too liberal for Mener.
Thank you.
Our last speaker is Michelle Graff.
Thank you, Michelle Graff. I wanted to speak, to oppose the release for religious instruction. The bottom line is, I think there's already more demands than the district can support in terms of various mandates. Instruction time is precious, and the bottom line is, there are other options. So for instance, my own kids, we sent them to PSR. They went to Sunday School. So I had no problem finding time outside of school hours for them to obtain the religious instruction that I wanted them to have. And, and if that is something that's a priority for parents, there are other options. So I don't see why we need a policy for this. I do have serious safety concerns as well. We go through so much to verify that the people coming into our schools pass background checks, have fingerprints, all those things. Why would we release our kids during school time for unvetted programs? And it's not the school system's job to vet these programs. So again, there are other options. I don't see what this solves. And, you know, this is better managed outside of the public school system. So, and again, I also agree that, you know, there is comments that it won't be a burden, you know, it won't require any resources of the school system. Why not provide that option? It will, I agree with the comments that it will definitely provide a drain on the resources in terms of getting students to where they need to be. God forbid something happens, why a student is released to that? Do you think they're going to not come back on Mener schools and saying, why did you let this happen? I mean, it's just, there's too many questions unanswered that I think we should oppose this. Thank you.
Thank you.
That concludes public participation.
Next, we have our superintendent's report and recommendations.
Good evening, everyone. We are very fortunate to have a recommendation on the agenda this evening for our new leader for the Department of Transportation. This will be for Jackie Sturm to begin serving in the role of the Director of Safety and Transportation beginning on January 1st, 2025. I want to thank Chris Paporis, the Superintendent of Euclid, for working with me to allow this shift to happen mid-year. With this position, we are going to have Mrs. Sturm build upon the shifts we have made in the Transportation Department this fall and continue to work with our bus drivers to create safe and efficient bus stops and routes in our district. She's also going to bring an area of expertise in our district around school safety, as she was pulled into being part of the safety team in Euclid earlier this school year. One other transportation item that I know I have heard from our parents a lot over the last couple of years is looking at a parent app for transportation. As I have mentioned previously, we have new routing software this year that we have been using to make our routes more efficient. We are now looking at some of the additional components of that system that may help us with some of the challenges we continue to face as we navigate the bus driver shortage around the country. A group from our district administrative team that has been working in transportation all year had the opportunity to see a demonstration of the system's navigation software and hardware last week. These devices would be installed in our buses and provide our drivers with the routes, driving directions, and stop locations that we currently have on our hard copy routing sheets. This component of the system would also allow us to send immediate routing changes for the split, combined, and double routes that we are having to run on a daily basis due to the driver shortage. The software would also allow us to automate our preroute bus inspections and keep electronic records instead of the current paper copies that we are using. The final piece to the puzzle is a parent app that will provide real-time updates on bus changes and routing times on a daily basis. We felt these components of our new software are worth a closer look, so we're going to pilot these items in five buses at some point here during the second semester to determine if this is something we want to fully implement for the 2025-26 school year. I know this has been a long time coming, so I am pleased that we are a couple steps closer to resolving this part of our transportation issues.
Mr. Heath, I just had a, I know I had talked to you earlier, so figured I'd ask the question now. I know you're prepared for it. So the position that we had, just so the public is aware, just in case they have similar questions that I had, the position that, of the person who resigned, she was only getting paid about $80,000 or so, give or take, with performance bonuses. And then this new position is at about $140,000. So I know we had Director of Transportation and Safety a few years ago, then we kind of switched that over. So if you could just kind of speak to and justify that cost difference and kind of speak to why we're doing that, so people understand.
Sure. As most of you guys know, I've spent a considerable amount of time in the Transportation Department along with five or six other district administrators, just trying to keep our buses running every day. We've learned an awful lot about transportation, probably more than I ever really want to know about transportation. And we realized fairly quickly that we needed a person that had significant contract language knowledge. I think that's one thing that we still continue to struggle with, even putting five or six district-level administrators over there. The contract language for transportation is pretty, pretty complex. So trying to find somebody that would be able to navigate that was one of our top priorities. We also realized that we needed a person that could come in and maintain that positive direction of the culture that we're currently building in the department. I think that's the one thing that we currently are most proud of right now. That department has come an awful long way in the last six to eight weeks, just because there's this level of professionalism coming out of that department now. The drivers have been phenomenal, helping each other out, and we want to make sure that that continues. We also knew we needed someone that had a really strong, positive voice to work through the demands that the Mener community has for our transportation office. Right now, that's, a lot of that has fallen on me, and if you've seen me standing on street corners during the day, I apologize, or just trying to check on the safety and efficiency of our routes. I've been stopped on a couple of occasions by our fantastic Mener Police Department questioning why I'm standing on a street corner with my notepad writing down notes. When I explain what I'm doing, they're, oh, I'm so sorry. Thanks for, for doing that for us. So we, we want somebody that's going to be able to come in and, and kind of work through some of those things as well. We've spent a considerable amount of time just discussing the entire structure of that department, because we want to make sure that we've got a model that's going to be sustainable here for the next few years as well. Again, we're kind of reverting back to the model that we had would be like three or four years ago now, where we had a Director of Safety and Transportation that was a district-level administrative team position. So we want this individual to make sure that they have the support they need, so we want them to be part of that, that team meeting that we have on a weekly basis, just to make sure that we, we keep telling the drivers, even when we bring in somebody new, it's not like we're going away. I think a lot of us that have been working over there are fairly invested in how this department runs now, and, you know, probably some of us to a sickening standpoint kind of like doing it as well, just from the logistical side of things. So anyways, we had those conversations about that structure. That's what kind of led us into this role, you know, kind of looking at what we had previously. We do have a job description that, for this particular role of Director of Safety and Transportation. So we started to try and find that individual that had that, that skill set, and, and we are very, very fortunate to be able to bring in somebody that's at the Assistant Superintendent level in a different district to come in and serve in this position.
And Mr. Heath, is that, that's why, because the previous person who was in the position, I think in 2022 is when they left, they were making it about $112,000, but they didn't have a master's. They didn't have this additional experience.
Correct.
Okay.
And, and just looking at that salary schedule, because we literally did pull the same salary schedule from when we had the Director of Safety and Transportation previously, and we went straight off of that salary schedule. So that's, that's one of the pieces to the puzzle there. Final thing that I'll mention is just from a school safety standpoint, if you'll recall my first year here, we, we asked Mr. Porter to continue on as our school safety officer, and thank you for bringing it up, Tristan. I think we still need to pull his name off the website, because we haven't been doing that for a couple of years. Now, we had that for the first year. We had a stipend that was assigned to him to serve in that role. Over the last two years, it's been kind of a combination of Mr. Hammond, Mrs. Estes, and I serving kind of that role. So having one person to really kind of drive that work and have some cohesiveness to it, I think is going to be a great addition for us.
Thank you so much for explaining that.
Absolutely.
And Mrs. Sturm has a unique resume, I think, because of her experience here in our own district as an elementary building principal. So all of that insight lets her understand the pupil side of it, the parent side of it, and then her experience in Euclid and personnel lets her understand the employee side of it. So it was, I think, a delightful bit of serendipity for us to have her available for us, and I'm so glad that she's willing to come over.
And I would just add that from a financial perspective, we still have a net savings. Back in 2021, when I first came back to the district and was doing business operations, we had business operations, an assistant treasurer, and a Director of Safety and Transportation. Total salaries totaling over $335,000. Even now, now we're looking four years later, '24, '25, total salaries are projected at $290,000. So if you look at, over the time, we've had savings, there's some efficiency. So if you look at, over the time, we've had savings, there's some efficiencies that needed to be addressed, but from an economic standpoint, we're still net positive.
Madam President, Members of the Board, and Mr. Wade, I have the following recommendations listed under the Consent Agenda and recommend approval of Items 6A1 and 6A2.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? Mr. Wade, please call the roll.
Ms. Payne.
Yes.
Ms. Jessling.
Yes.
Ms. Iapolo.
Yes.
Ms. Marchaza.
Yes.
Ms. Cook.
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Madam President, Members of the Board, and Mr. Wade, I am recommending approval of the Resolution declaring the used surplus equipment of the Board of Education are no longer needed for any school purpose and authorizing the sale of the surplus equipment by public auction.
So moved.
Second. Is there any discussion? Mr. Wade, please call the roll.
Ms. Iapolo.
Yes.
Ms. Payne.
Yes.
Ms. Jessling.
Yes.
Ms. Marchaza.
Yes.
Ms. Cook.
Yes.
Madam President, Members of the Board, and Mr. Wade, I am recommending approval of the Resolution to approve Board Member expense reimbursement. I will call these out separately, as each Board Member requesting reimbursement will abstain from voting on their own resolution. So let's start with the Resolution to approve reimbursement for Maggie Cook.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Ms. Payne.
Yes.
Ms. Iapolo.
Yes.
Ms. Jessling.
Yes.
Ms. Marchaza.
Yes.
Ms. Cook.
Abstain.
The Resolution to approve reimbursement for Rose Iapolo.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Ms. Jessling.
Yes.
Ms. Payne.
Yes.
Ms. Iapolo.
Abstain.
Ms. Marchaza.
Yes.
Ms. Cook.
Yes.
The Resolution to approve reimbursement for Virginia Jessling.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Ms. Iapolo.
Yes.
Ms. Payne.
Yes.
Ms. Jessling.
Abstain.
Ms. Marchaza.
Yes.
Ms. Cook.
Yes.
The Resolution to approve reimbursement for Lauren Marchaza.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? Mr. Wade, please call the roll.
Ms. Payne.
Yes.
Ms. Jessling.
Yes.
Ms. Iapolo.
Yes.
Ms. Marchaza.
Abstain.
Ms. Cook.
Yes.
And the Resolution to approve reimbursement for Annie Payne.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion?
Who, two people at the same time?
I seconded.
You seconded, I knew that.
She was first.
Okay.
You got it.
So, Ms. Jessling.
Yes.
Ms. Marchaza.
Yes.
Ms. Iapolo.
Yes.
Ms., yeah, Ms. Payne.
Abstain.
Ms. Cook.
Yes.
All motions carried 4-0.
Madam President, Members of the Board, and Mr. Wade, I am recommending approval of Agenda Item C1 related to Certified Personnel, and C2 through C4 are related to Human Resource Matters.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Ms. Payne.
Yes.
Ms. Jessling.
Yes.
Ms. Iapolo.
Yes.
Ms. Marchaza.
Yes.
Ms. Cook.
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
And I'm also recommending approval of Agenda Item D related to Administrative Staff.
So moved.
Second. Is there any additional discussion? Please call the roll.
Ms. Jessling.
Yes.
Ms. Iapolo.
Yes.
Ms. Marchaza.
Yes.
Ms. Payne.
Yes.
Ms. Cook.
Yes.
This, motion carries 5-0.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you.
Next, we have the Boards of, the Board of Education report and recommendations. Under Business, we have a second reading and approval of Policy 5136, which relates to new personal communication devices. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? Mr. Wade, please call the roll.
Ms. Payne.
Yes.
Ms. Iapolo.
Yes.
Ms. Jessling.
Yes.
Ms. Marchaza.
Yes.
Ms. Cook.
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
I have a quick point-of-order question. The Administrative Staff Transition Day, is did we lump that all in with the, with the prior item? I just want to make sure we covered that. Was that covered under D, it was both of those items? Or do we have to do that separately?
Yes, that was lumped in with the administrative.
It was just on the second page, so I just wanted to make sure we covered it.
Yes.
Okay, next, we have the Legislative Report.
Okay, I apologize in advance, it's going to be kind of long, because things are busy at the State House. So for starters, State Board Updates, there are a lot of proposed rules for open, open for public comment. Oh, sorry, this is actually just one, the ODEW has a lot of them open. This is the, the one for the State, excuse me, State Board is regarding post-conviction instruments established under the Ohio Revised Code, and amendments to the rule to clarify the State Board of Ed's recognition of their authority and establish procedures for considering them. You can comment on those as members of the public on their website. For the ODEW, they've got lots of rules open for public comment, everything from how we rate schools to lunch and breakfast programs, intervention standards for districts declared to be under academic watch. So lots of rules open for public comment, and I invite you to go to their website and check those out there too, if you'd like to weigh in. In the last month, we have had one legislator meeting, Mr. Heath, Mr. Wade, Mrs. Iapolo, and I met with House Representative Jamie Callender to talk about issues around public school funding and support related to our district, including funding the third phase in of the Fair School Funding Plan, excuse me, stages five and six, of the Fair School Funding Plan for the upcoming budget, the state budget, as well as financial support for more secure facilities and also mental health services. We talked about a lot, but it was a great meeting. State House Updates, this is where all the action is right now, we have officially entered lame duck now that the presidential election is over, so lawmakers are back at the State House, very, very busy. This is the end of the 135th General Assembly, we're about to enter the 136th in January, so this is really the time for lawmakers to kind of make their last chance moves to get their bills passed and across the finish line before having to start all over again in the next General Assembly. So because of this, we see a lot of bills sort of being sped through the legislative process, which is normal, but that means unfortunately that there's fewer opportunities for the public to weigh in and public testimony. Nevertheless, there have been lots of hearings, there are about 190 bills right now that could impact education that are pending. More are being, more are actually being filed every day, so they're, they're not done yet. So lots going on. I'm going to touch on just some of them, there have been tons of committee meetings over the last couple of weeks. The Joint Property Tax Review Committee, their report, they finished up already, but their report should be coming out like in the next couple of weeks. And some of their recommendations, we expect that they will make it into the budget for next year. The House Primary and Secondary Education Committee met a couple of times already, and I'm not going to cover every bill they went over, just sort of the heavy hitters, the ones that are, you know, kind of have a high likelihood of passing, or, you know, there are a couple that are on our agenda tonight, so I'll go over those quickly. But there have been, there's been, there was a really long hearing on House Bill 445, which is on our agenda tonight, as we know, would require school boards to have a policy in place for release time for legislation instruction. There's a companion bill in the Senate as well, which, you know, sometimes, it's basically the same bill in the Senate, the other chamber, and they just kind of get them started in both chambers to see which one finishes first. So that bill, its, its companion bill is Senate Bill 293. That one had a hearing today, and I think that was sort of like in the afternoon, I didn't get to tune in, but I think there was some opponent testimony heard. There was also a second hearing under the Senate Education Committee for House Bill 432, and this regards alternate credentialing pathways for career tech educators. Happy to report that Dr. Joe Kleven actually went down to the State House to testify for us in support of the bill, which would basically enhance the ability for career tech educators to get on board with career tech, and, because it's, it's very much in demand, and we're trying to recruit more educators in that space, so thank you, Dr. Kleven, wherever you are. The House Transportation Committee also met, and they adopted a version of House Bill 279. This is around busing and bus safety. This would increase the penalties for illegally passing a stopped school bus, I think, which we all know happens all too frequently in Ohio. It would also designate August as School Bus Safety Month. And then several other committees met, but again, I'm not going to go through all those, because there is lots going on. I do want to report back on Senate Bill 29, which we've kind of been reporting along the way. I mentioned that there would be fixes to this one, there were a lot of unforeseen consequences of the bill that was written, and they didn't really expect a lot of, or at least that we were told, they did not expect a lot of the implications and problems with this bill that had to do with, like, the notifications of parents, to parents if we were going to be monitoring school-issued devices. So the fixes, I think, are going to end up in House Bill 432, and, let's see, they're going to remove the language about the 72-hour rule, they're also going to be adding an emergency clause in that bill too. So it looks like that one's shaping up to be a much better-looking bill and much more practical in application. On the desk for signature from, for the Governor's signature is Senate Bill 104, which is also on our agenda tonight. This one, the Senate concurred, which means it just passed this bill earlier this week. It is on Dewine's desk for signature, though he has not signed it yet. I think in the past, he has said he will, though again, hasn't happened yet. He does have, have the option to do nothing, which would mean the bill would pass into law anyway, we'll have to just wait to see what he does. At any rate, if he does sign it, it would go into effect about 90 days af, excuse me, exactly 90 days after his signature, if there is no legal challenge during that time. So I'm kind of wondering what we're going to see with this bill, I know the ACLU and maybe one other group has decided that they would like to file suit against this bill, so we kind of have to play this one by ear and make sure we're staying in touch with our legal counsel to understand how we can ensure that we comply with the law. This bill kind of sped forward, just for a little bit of background, originally, I had reported out on this bill as House Bill 183, it is now Senate Bill 104, and really just what happens is sometimes if lawmakers want to move their bill forward a little more quickly and kind of leapfrog over some other legislation, just speed it along, they'll slide it into another bill, and that's what happened here. Senate Bill 104 is actually more than just about the bathrooms, it is actually also about College Credit Plus programming, which is, you know, fairly bipartisan and broadly appreciated bill. This one is, again, it was combined with House Bill 183, which was Adam Bird's bill, and now we've got Senate Bill 104 all-encompassing these things, so that's why we see a lot of things happening within one bill that seemingly have nothing to do with each other. So I think we've, we've talked about the bill in the past, I'm not going to go through the language, we're going to get more into discussion about it later. It, I do want to note though, I don't know if I've noted this before in my reports, that this one not only prohibits, like, public schools from establishing bathrooms for multigender or unisex or non-gender use, but it also puts some prohibitions on universities as well. And that could mean that we have some complications, because we're, we're not only regulating spaces for K-12 education, but we're now looking at university spaces which are utilized by adults. So that's, that's just something that could complicate the process down the road. There's also no funding to, I should say, there's no funding to help districts or universities accommodate the law, so we wouldn't be able to have access to any funding to upgrade our facilities or change them as needed. Okay, and then I have a lot more to actually discuss that is legal-related, but I, you know, I think we're going to do that when we report out on our conference highlights and takeaways, so I think I'll just wait to do the rest there. There's updates on case law and all sorts of other good stuff.
Okay, thank you very much. Next, we will have the Student Achievement Report, Mrs. Tesling.
Thank you. Ah, thank you. The first quarter of the 24-25 school year was completed on October 18th. The second quarter is well underway and continues to be packed with an array of learning activities to support the development of well-rounded, successful students. Here's a sampling of the opportunities and events of the past month. The first round of National Merit Honors has been announced. Annually, the National Merit Scholarship Corporation names high-scoring students by recognizing National Merit semifinalists and commended students. Some 1.3 million eligible pupils take the PSAT and the NMSQT tests annually, and the top 1,600, that's less than 1% of the nation's graduating seniors, are named semifinalists. The remaining top 34,000 test takers within the top 4% are assigned commended student status. Mennor's semifinalists are Brian McNona, Mark Pastore, and Zaron Shams. Mennor's commended students are Ryan Chen, Adam Shaner, Lucas Bataro, Matthew Suhar, and Anushree Zimmerman. Congratulations. As affirmed by our strategic plan framework for the future, Mennor Schools is committed to expanding college and career readiness opportunities. The Mennor High School Annual Career Expo was held on Wednesday, October 30th, an impressive turnout of over 1,260 students engaged with 63 businesses from a wide range of industries over the three-hour event. Participants had the opportunity to connect with representatives from fields including manufacturing, healthcare, construction, cosmetology, accounting, IT, aviation, law enforcement, the military, and more. The event provided valuable networking opportunities, allowing students to explore potential career paths and gain insights into various professions. Through our growing business outreach program, Cardinal Connect, our district has a goal of working together for a better partnership between business and education. We're grateful for the generous involvement of so many local firms to provide this important exposure for our students. Veterans Day is an important occasion on the district calendar. Among this year's activities were Lake Elementary presenting an evening fifth-grade concert, Fairfax and Sterling Morton holding veterans' breakfasts, and Orchard Hollow hosting a special honoring our Veterans Assembly. These events help students connect to the veterans and their families and understand the sacrifices made by all who have served our country. An exciting school-wide clapout was held on Friday, November 1st at Mennor High. The student body celebrated the groups who qualified for their respective state-level competitions. Featured were our boys' cross-country team, the marching band, and students Zaran Shams, Aidan Duraney, and Shafian Hassan, who qualified for the Ohio High School Mathematics Invitational Olympiad. Next month, we look forward to celebrating all of our hard-working fall athletes, including our varsity football team, who will play Saint Eses Friday at 7:00 p.m. The Fall Sports Award Program will also be held this week. Speaking of football, 12 varsity players from the boys' team and five members of the girls' flag football team hosted students from CARES for the Third Annual CARES and Mennor High School Football Clinic. CARES students took a tour of the training facilities and had a chance to try on the helmets and shoulder pads that the varsity team wears. Players paired up with the CARES students to go out to the field for a pre-game warm-up and a run through various football skill stations, including passing, catching, and footwork drills. The CARES students were divided into two teams to compete in a short game of touch football with their high school supporters as coaches. The day ended with awards, pictures, autographs, and pizza. A special thank you to Nancy Sandin and Don Schutz for volunteering their time and for donating the food. Another special thank you to Northeast Ohio Flag Football for providing the medals and footballs for each student. It was a memorable experience for everyone involved. The Fighting Cardinal marching band was proud to receive the coveted Superior rating in their Ohio State competition, finishing their contest season on a high note. They continue to offer spirited musical complement to the football team's triumphs on the field during all these postseason games. Each year, Mr. Sean St. Hilaire sophomores make suggestions for school reforms and improvements to build a better Mennor High. Aligned with our strategic plan that encourages students to engage with the community in authentic learning experiences, the school board, administrators, and teachers were invited to see their presentations, and we appreciated hearing their insights and ideas. The Mennor Theater opened its 101st season with the hit comedy, The Nerd, on November 1st through 3rd. Audience filled this fine arts center Audience filled this Fine Arts Center with laughter as the antics unfolded on stage. This was the third time the show was performed at Mennor High, and members of the 2003 and 2007 productions came back to support the current students. They're already hard at work getting the spring musical, Nine to Five, ready for audiences. Last month's Mennor High School Fall Orchestra Concert, directed by Mr. Matt Yoke and Ms. Katie Driscoll, was performed for a full house. The program included Mozart's A Little Night Music and Aaron Copland's Fanfare for the Common Man. The orchestra will be presenting a special holiday concert on December 11th, and the Mennor High Band will perform on December 17th. Last month's evening of choral music with the Mennor High School Choirs, directed by Mr. Adam Landry, was very well received. Their Fall Cabaret fundraiser will be this Saturday at 7:00 PM here at the Fine Arts Center. This parent organization event features our choir students performing pop and Broadway music in solos and small groups, and tickets are available online. On October 28th and 29th, Mennor High hosted the Think Fast, Interactive Vaping Dangers presentation. The program focused on educating and raising awareness about the dangers of e-cigarettes. Each grade level attended a session, and student teams engaged with the content through a fun game show-style format. The Memorial and Shore Middle School Choirs, under the direction of Mr. Glenn Colma, performed their autumn musical programs last month, and Memorial's band is preparing to present their concert on December 5th. It was a great day for Mennor at the Ohio School Boards Association Capitol Conference in Columbus last week. The students at Mennor's Lake Elementary gave conference attendees a great look at their houses at the Student Achievement Fair. The visitors learned how Lake has incorporated a house system to create a culture of belonging. Every staff member and student is engaged, promoting a sense of healthy competition while teaching students how their efforts contribute toward the whole group. In a second Student Achievement Fair booth, our CTE Allied Health students shared highlights of their career tech program. Students learn essential healthcare skills for entry-level medical positions and discover their aptitude for the field. Allied Health provides certification and a strong foundation for the next levels of medical education at a post-secondary institution. For nearly seven decades, Mennor Public Schools Board members have participated in OSBA to adopt best practices and work for the general advancement of public education in Ohio. All five members of our Board of Education were able to attend the 2024 Capitol Conference. Mrs. Aiopolo and Mrs. Payne collaborated on a presentation sharing our cellphone policy, no cell bell to bell. The session gave an overview of the Mennor guidelines, the rationale, and preliminary data on the improved enforcement of the program. The Capitol Conference offers three days of specialized learning sessions that include important topics such as legal updates, education trends, governance, governance issues, and legislation. Many of the sessions are focused on student achievement. This year's session topics included workforce alignment, increased physical activity to promote wellness, connecting classroom experiences to real-world learning, curriculum and the science of reading, renovating small spaces to improve student engagement, continuing COVID remediation to best-reach students still impacted by learning loss, post-secondary success and alternative graduation pathways, gathering qualitative and quantitative student feedback data, and foundational special education knowledge to facilitate board members making informed decisions. The wide array of learning sessions let each of us select topics of concern, specific interest, or of special pertinence to our district. We look forward to sharing more information on the state report card ratings and companion data during Mr. Heath's Cardinal Cafe presentation on November 21st. Next month, we'll look closely at our enrollments in some of our high school courses, such as our state-tested core content areas. A quick overview shows that 30% of juniors and seniors are enrolled in advanced placement courses, 43% of juniors and seniors are enrolled in CTE programs, and 27% of juniors and seniors are enrolled in College Credit Plus courses. Overall, 78% of our upperclassmen are enrolled in some type of college or career-ready program this year. We support our schools and children in our community through varied initiatives, and everyone can help. For nearly 30 years, the Mennor Schools Foundation has funded special classroom grants and student scholarships. Their key fundraiser, Pancakes for a Purpose, returns on Thanksgiving morning from 7:30 to 11:30, thanks to the support of Mennor's Yours Truly Restaurant. And from November 25th to December 6th, give the gift of warmth through the Fourth Annual Coats for Cards Program. New and like-new coats, gloves, and hats are being collected for those in need. Items or cash donations can be dropped off at the Board of Education building or the elementary school offices. Thank you, and happy Thanksgiving, everyone.
Thank you very much. At this time, we have the Chief Financial Officer's report and recommendations.
President, members of the board, this is our annual requirement by HOVICE Code to present a five-year forecast. So remember that our financial forecast is derived by these fiscal beliefs, that all fiscal decisions should be made in the context of our five-year forecast. So this is a very important document for us, not only from a regulatory standpoint, but from a financial planning standpoint. We realize there's management options attached to every dollar, that we, every dollar spent must add value to teaching and learning, and that we must aggressively manage our largest expenses, which are salary, benefits, special education, and facilities. And we believe that quality is always cheaper in the long term. So when we look at our current fiscal year, we're projecting our general fund revenue to be almost $111 million. Our projected general fund expenditures are about $114 million, putting us at a projected loss for the year of about $3 million. When we look at a quick snapshot of our forecast over the next five years, what we can see is we intend to continue to deficit spend in each of the out-years of the forecast, and when our ending cash balance then is obviously decreasing accordingly based on those projections. The one thing that I would note, in fiscal year 29, at the end of the year, we're looking at a $3.5 million deficit, which by law is not allowed. You cannot have a cash balance in the negative value. We're not the federal government. So when we make our forecasts, there are some key assumptions that we have to make based on the information we have at the time, so that the board and the community are aware. The assumptions that I made is that in 2027, when we have the training update to our current evaluations that just came out this past summer, we are assuming that things will start to normalize again. Data would tend to believe that this is the case. If you were to look at evaluations over the course of a long period of time, this past year was, the last few years have been kind of an anomaly. So we expect it to kind of continue to go back to a normal increase. So we would expect that in '27, Class 1 property, which is residential property, would go up by about 10.38%, and our historical trend of Class 2 valuations going up very little during the training updates would increase at 0.72%. It also assumes our historical increases in Class 1 new construction of $8.5 million annually would continue to happen, and we see a negative $1.5 million for Class 2 new construction because of TIFs and other forms of abatements that usually occur, or maybe that the property that was done was demolished and they haven't built it yet. So there's a variety of things that can kind of happen there. And again, annually, we see about a $2 million increase in public utility property taxes, PUP, and we assume our historical collection rates of 99.6% would occur as we move forward. That being said, we know that 69% of our money comes from local property taxes in the form of real estate property taxes and public utility property taxes equating to about $76.2 million. We receive 22% in state funding, 24 million of, 24.9 million of that, with almost 16 coming from the Fair School Funding Plan. We see about another 1.4 in restricted funding and from the holdstead and rollback exemptions that we get as property tax owners that are paid from the state, we receive about another $7.6 million. We receive about $9.8 million in other revenue. That's primarily made up of tuition payments, our interest-earned income, as well as payment in lieu of taxes that we receive from the City of Mennor, which total about 90% of that $9.8 million. And again, this is just for the general fund. So when we look at the historical perspective, I think a visual is always important for the community and the board. When you're looking at our revenue, you can see the property taxes is in that blue section. Your state taxes are coming in the form of unrestricted aid in the green, and then we're seeing our tangible personal property tax in that yellow line, and then we see the operating values kind of going up from there. But the big point that we see here is that we're not seeing drastic increases in revenue. Again, this kind of explains why next year, when we see the revaluation occur because of House Bill 920 and us not being at the floor, we'll only see an increase in the inside millage, and that will help protect the taxpayers from larger increases than maybe some of their neighboring school districts are seeing throughout the region. So key takeaways, we're expecting our revenue to be closer to $111 million, up from 110.8 roughly, that we said a few months ago when we were looking at our appropriations. And we'll be using this to track our budgeting moving forward. We believe the revenues will continue to remain relatively flat in all the out-years of the forecast. The 25% reevaluation increase is projecting to increase our revenue by about $2 million or 2.85%, and the district will be in need of new revenue dollars in the near future. When we look at our expenses, the majority of our expenses goes to personnel costs, almost 84% in the form of salaries and benefits. Our personnel costs are projected to be about $95.6 million, with 68.7 coming in the form of salaries and another 26, or almost 27 million coming in the form of benefits. Our next largest area is purchase services to support the operations of the school. This would be areas that we purchase to support student learning. This is where we have budgeted our school resource officers in, in the continuation of the SSL program, in other areas that we do purchase services. And then the rest of the expenditures are made up about $6.5 million in the form of supplies, capital improvements, debt, and other operating expenses. When we are looking at school expenses, with 84% of our budget being salary and benefits, obviously enrollment is a huge piece of that puzzle because it relates directly to educating our students or supporting our students in the form of transportation, the number of buildings that we have open for secretaries, food service personnel, so on and so forth. What we can see is a trend that has been seen throughout not only Lake County but across the state with declining enrollment. And we're seeing that in 2025, we're kind of hitting that, what we're expecting to be the, kind of the valley of that, and then it's going to start to level back off, assuming based on what we have seen historically over the last five years and aligned to our birth rates. So we are down to 6,527 students in our October payment from the state, based on our EMUS reporting. We're expecting that to see a slight uptick, potentially of four kids, and then kind of leveling out at a rate around that $6,600 student range. So with that, the assumptions that I've made in the expense side of the forecast is for all the out-years, we've assumed that an annual 1.5% salary increase to the base for all members, that's certified, classified administrator, and exempt. We have assumed all staffing levels remain constant based on the current enrollment projections. So we're not, we're not forecasting any increase in staff moving forward or a decrease. Our forecast does include the addition of two new bus aides that we added this year, three new bus drivers, a reclassification of an office aide to a secretary III, and the new director of transportation and safety. So all those assumptions have been included in the forecast and are forecasted in the out-years. There's an assumption that healthcare will increase annually at a rate of 7%. This is a little bit more aggressive than even the national average, which is about 8%, I feel, based on our current healthcare plan and the work that we're doing, that we can continue to be in that 7% range and hopefully shoot for better. And based on the Congressional Budget Office's publication, The Budget and Economic Outlook 2024 to 2034, most areas outside of the ones listed above, we're expecting that we'll see an inflationary increases between 2.25% and 2.5% annually. So when we look at this from a visual perspective, you can kind of see 2024 was our fiscal year and actual, we're seeing what we're projecting based on our budget and our forecast updates after going through a portion of our fiscal year, because we have the, you know, we have July, August, September, and October now finished. So they're included in the assumptions that we're making in the forecast, and you can see the rest of the assumptions and how they play out in the other areas. What I always tell the board and the community to look for here, is there anything that stands out to us that doesn't make sense or would raise a flag? And you can see that there's nothing that really, in my opinion, would say, okay, why can't we explain that? That can all be explained by the assumptions we make. An example of an anomaly would be the purple here, but if you've come, which I know you all have, because I see you every single month, we should all be able to, if I was to quiz you and like open up some sort of technology and say, what is the reason for this, we would all say, that is because, Mr. Wade, it's the transfer that you made in 2023 to fund the capital improvement plan. So there was a one-time transfer, so that's an anomaly. Those are the types of things that the community and the board should be looking for and be able to understand and explain why we are seeing those things. So you can see from this, we're seeing a typical increase because of the inflationary increases that I explained in my assumptions. So one of the other things that I shared with the Citizens Financial Advisory when I presented this last week, is I think it's always important to kind of keep ourselves in check, because one of the things the Citizens Financial Advisory always wants to make sure that we're doing is that we're making accurate assumptions that are in line with historical trends, so that we're as close to being where we think we should be, and we're not understating revenue and overstating expenses, so at the end of the year that we're seeing a 10% swing. I would say that the historical annual expenditure change prior to this is a 2.38%. We're expecting a 3.71% in the out-years, and a lot of that kind of goes back to salaries and benefits. We're still kind of unsure, right? We have collective bargaining agreements with our certified and classified staffs that are unknown, so the 1.5% is a placeholder. I think it's a reasonable placeholder. And then 7% in healthcare, again, is in line with that, maybe a little bit higher than we've seen in the past, and that can equate for some of that. But I would say to the board and the community, I'd say that this is a check and balance that says that we're making some pretty, I would think, fair assumptions and that aren't outlandish in causing us to be overly inflated on our expenses. So our key takeaways, again, we need to make sure that we're monitoring our enrollment to ensure our staffing is in line with our enrollment. If we start to see enrollment trends where it's going up and we need to add staff, obviously we'd have to make those assumptions and add them to the forecast. The same thing would be true, too. I know in discussions with Ms. Payne with regards to private school increases that we saw from '24 to '25, based on what we would believe could be accounted to the increased expansion of Ed Choice vouchers, was a little bit higher than it has typically been in the past, and if that continues, that could cause our enrollment to continue to decline rather than kind of level out. So those are the things that we have to kind of monitor and continue, because, you know, if we're educating kids and we're seeing continued decrease in enrollment or an increase in enrollment, those are going to fluctuate where we're projecting. Special ed costs, you know, sometimes, you know, students have severe needs where they have to have special education, which we're obligated to provide, and those costs can be very, very costly for one student, because that's what we need to do to provide education for that student. So we have to make sure that we're cognizant of that and making sure that we're looking at all options. And then again, you've heard me beat this drum as well. We have a capital improvement plan. We have to make sure we're maintaining our facilities, and that's another large expense for us. So we need to make sure that we're keeping those things in mind. We need to find ways to slow spending and flatten our expense curve as we have over the past few years, and I think that can be shown here. I highlighted this in the Citizens Financial Advisory. You know, we've really, if you look at '22, '23, and '24 and '25, there's not a whole lot of growth there. We've worked pretty hard, and we've said this to the community, it's not always about asking for additional revenue, it's about controlling expenses, and I think that this would show that we have really tried to do that. And that's something that we've got to continue to do as we move forward. I do think it's important to point out to the community and the board that, you know, our average growth, and you've seen me present this in a number of ways, I've compared it to other local municipalities, I've showed you where ours is at, but over the previous five years, our average annual growth total was only 1.22%. Inflation during that same Inflation during that same time was 5.67%. So because our relative, our revenue is relatively flat and inflation's going up at a, you know, a much higher rate, you know, four times, almost five times that, inherently if we didn't have any raises, what that says is we'd always, and this is the issue with school funding in Ohio on some level, right? You have flat revenue and constantly increasing expenses just by inflationary costs, you're always going to have to go back for new revenue. So it's just something that, this is the way that we fund schools in Ohio. So what you can see, too, is that over the next five years, we're projecting an annual growth in local tax of 1.06%. Our annual total revenue is going to go up about 0.7% while inflation, I said, is like, you know, coming in that 2.3, 2.25% rate. We're seeing that it's going to continue. One of the things that we're going to probably see, two things are going to happen, too, with a revenue standpoint that we have to be cognizant of, is the economy continues to improve, we've benefited because we've seen high interest rates on our investments over the past few years because interest rates have gone up. As interest rates start to go back down, the safe investments that we are obligated by law to invest in, those interest rates are going to drop. So we've been seeing millions of dollars, $2 to $3 million a year in investment income that's not going to necessarily be there for two reasons. One, as interest rates stop, drop, our investment interest rates going to fall accordingly with it because people are going to start to take their money out of safe investments like treasuries and securities, which we can invest in and put them into the stock market, which we can't, we're not allowed to by law, as well as we're deficit spending. So the amount of money that we can invest is going to be going down at the same time. So, you know, that's again, just to kind of explain why, you might be asking yourself, why is this going down over here? And that's partly because of it, not the only reason, but it's just one of the main reasons where we get some extra income. I do like to remind the board, we have a cash operating reserve policy that dictates that we have to have a cash fund balance of 15% of our annual fund expenses, which for this year, which would be $17 million approximately, which we can't fall below, which in our forecast currently, we do fall below in the year fiscal year '28. We also have our 5% set aside for the budget reserve fund, which statutorily cannot exceed 5% of the prior year's revenue, which last year our revenue was 109 million points, or 638,000, which equates to about $5.5 million. So if you look at where we're at, and again, you can see this is kind of that flattening of the curve that I spoke of, our days cash on hand is projected to decrease as the amount of cash balance that we have decreases. And as I said, in 2028, we actually fall below our policy, which states that we can't fall below $17 million, which is roughly 90 days. And that's usually the industry standard that we'd want to make sure so we're not going towards the proverbial cliff. And when we look at kind of this graphic here, that kind of shows the same thing, as we kind of get into '27 and '28, we're getting closer to that red zone here because ours, our short, budget surplus to shortfall is a percentage revenue comes in. And this graphic here kind of shows, because this is when our forecast ends is in '29, but we can statistically show based on historical expenses and revenue trends, kind of what's going to happen if we were to kind of look at '30 and '31. So this is basically, this is a statistical analysis, this isn't done with the same level of care that we do for, you know, through '29 with the assumptions that I shared earlier. You can see that that deficit spending would continue. But what's important is over here in this bottom left of the screen, sorry, Ms. Apolo, I think I caught your head there. It says importantly, if you were to put a levy on and you're looking at a low range or a high range, what would those values be if you went in '25? What would they be if you went '26 and you'd be in '27? And you can see that the range in '25 falls between 4.2 and 5.26. And if you wait, that goes to 5.26 to 6.83 because now you have to cover the increase in expenses and so on and so forth. So as I talked to the Citizens Financial Advisory and I talked to Mr. Heath and his team, and we were looking at kind of the strategic plan and looking at the ways that we were trying to focus on and what we feel is the best course of action for the district, I ran a few scenarios for the board just to stimulate some initial synapse firings for future discussion because I've already recommended this a number of times that we do, my belief is that we need to pass new money by no later than the end of 2025 calendar year. So if we were to pass a five mil levy in '25, by November '25, the first collection would come in fiscal year '26, the half collection, with a full collection coming in '27. So it would generate about $13.6 million when it's fully implemented. What you can see is that in '26, it means that we're balanced. '27, we're balanced. And then if nothing else changes, based on my assumptions, we're starting the deficit spending again in '28, '29. So you're looking, you know, you're looking basically for a five-year lifespan based on the current assumptions that we have here. And that's at five mil. And I would say that that's just maintaining, again, what we're doing. There's nothing, nothing added to that. If you were to go to a six mil or a 5.9 mil, you're going to generate about $16.3 million. And that's going to put us in the black through 2028. And, you know, you're probably looking for a levy closer to '31, so that gives you another year at least of kind of stretching that out. And again, it assumes nothing else changes, everything stays the same. What you could do here, though, is you could take some of the money, the extra money that you're getting, and you could use that for other capital improvements in the form of safety. So some of the vestibule discussions and other safety discussions that the board started to have with Mr. Heath and his team, you could use that extra millage to kind of fund some of those projects that we had to cut back on because of the failure of the PI levy from last November. If you push it out to next year, or the next year of 2026, you're looking at 6.9 mils. Again, not collecting anything in '26 because you're not going to pass it till November '26 at the latest, you're looking at about $18.8 million in total. But you can see you're only not deficit spending for one year, and that's the first year that you collect the full freight. Your deficit spending in the year '29. So really with this one, you're only going to get about maybe four years before you're asking for additional revenue. So I just bring those to the attention of the board and the community just to continue to plan out of where we're at. Again, this is a continuation of sound fiscal management of our expenses as well as the need at some point to have to seek additional revenue. The board is going to be tasked, obviously with the support of Mr. Heath and myself, to give opinions. You know I love to give an opinion, so I'm happy to give one whenever asked. What is going to be the timing for what amount, what type of levy, and how much? But these three scenarios, I think, give the board a little bit of an insight into kind of where our options are. The Citizens Financial Advisory, I think, falls more into the 2025 part of the discussion to get that money sooner so it can be less of an ask. And then it's going to be dependent upon what we want to achieve as a group would be that millage rate. There's also something else at your table that I'll just point out that I didn't put in the slide. There is the Squire Patent Boggs 2025 calendar for levies. Please remember that by law, we have to have that filed 90 days in advance, but it's a two-step process. So really, it's more like the 120-day, 110-day for the first piece to be passed, then we take that to the county auditor, they certify it, we come back, we vote, and then we would take it to the Board of Elections prior to that 90th day. The other thing that the board needs to start considering when you start looking at levies is the levy going to be a general operating levy, which would count against the outside millage? Or would it be an emergency levy, which would not count towards the outside millage? General operating can go from one to five years or it could be continuing. Emergency levies can go up to 10 years. They cannot be continuing.
Is there specific guidelines that you have to follow for it to be an emergency levy? Like, is there an ORC, you know, you have to meet X, Y, and Z?
There's no, yeah, the name is, it's kind of a misnomer when it comes to the emergency levy. No, there's not specific guidelines. It's just a matter of what the board, it's, obviously you have to be in an operating deficit, but I'll get more clarification on that specifically, but not really. It's really kind of, when it comes down to the gist of it, it's really, do you want it to count towards the outside millage or not? Emergency levies are fixed dollar, if you remember as well. So a fixed dollar amount, so if we say it's going to raise $16 million, it always raises $16 million, it never increases. A general operating levy is a fixed sum, so the millage can never exceed the approved millage. So there's a little bit of difference there. And because we weren't at the floor currently, when we had the anomaly that we saw this past year, our taxpayers were protected because of House Bill 920, so that's something that we should consider moving forward. So when we look at kind of a summary, we are deficit spending all the five years of the forecast, they're written there on red. We should continue to work to monitor our spending and find ways to control costs. Again, continue to flatten our expense curve in the out years of the forecast. We continue to deficit spend, our cash balance is depleting, and we will fall below the recommended minimum standard of 90 days cash reserves by FY '27, and we'll be below our general fund operating budget reserve limit in fiscal year '28. So we will need to continue to find ways, again, to cut costs and strongly consider additional general fund operating dollars as early as the end of calendar year 2025. And this forecast was recommended for approval by the Citizens Financial Advisory Committee on Thursday, November 14, 2024. I'm happy to take any questions.
I thought that the Citizens Financial Advisory asked great questions and were definitely supportive of what you shared, Mr. Wade. And based on their recommendations, I would think that we as a board would want to have maybe a special work session to talk about what the feasibility is of those various scenarios, especially looking at the deadlines for special elections and if we were going to do something earlier in the year versus a year from now so we could make that decision and have enough time to have all the paperwork filed.
I would agree. Just as a point of reference, too, it does not look like there would be anything locally on in May. And if there's nothing else on except for us, we have 45 precincts, so it would cost us about $90,000 in May. If the state does put an issue on, which there is a potential, I'm hearing from some sources that I have, that would split the cost down to $45,000. And just as a point of reference for the board, it would cost us about $30,000 to have the November emergency and PI levy on. So there is a cost associated with this as well.
Can you say one more time what was the cost for the November?
About $30,000 last year. Yeah.
And you expect it would be the same November '25?
Yes, I would expect it to be similar, yeah.
Because we have more than one other issue sharing with us.
Yeah, so it kind of gets split amongst everybody. If the state's on, they take half the cost. So if that state issue was to get on, and obviously we can't bank on that because the timeline's going to be quick, right? Because we'd have to have everything kind of, at least the first resolution passed by the middle of January, the latest would be my recommendation, and talking to legal counsel on that. So that would be a quick turnaround.
And if I recall correctly, anything that would be passed in 2025 is collected in 2026, whether it's passed at a special election earlier in the year?
Correct.
Or at the end, so.
Yes, it's like you get two bites at the apple, so to speak. I would prefer one. Any other questions?
Mr. Wade, did you make any assumptions with the fair school funding plan and?
I did. I assumed that it would continue, based on our discussions with Senator Serino and Troy and Mr. Callender, I did assume that we would see the continuation of the phase in in '26 and '27. And that the base cost would increase as well, at least for the first part of that. So we did assume in the out years that would continue.
So you assumed both?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you.
Which also assumes that the guarantee would still be there, and we'd still be on the guarantee of some sort.
Do you feel that's optimistic or realistic?
I feel it's realistic.
Good.
I try not to be optimistic in my forecast.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Again, Mr. Wade, just to follow up from our conversation today, just in case other people have that question about the Ed Choice vouchers, that is not a part of the forecast. Like, we can't forecast how much are going to be utilized next year. We didn't anticipate this amount of private school increase. So that's based on historical data, and you said live birth rates?
Yep, so it's live birth rates and historical data. So if we do see upticks or downticks in any form of enrollment that we didn't see historically that would impact us potentially here with regards to expenses, not from a revenue standpoint, though, because, again, from a revenue standpoint, taxes aren't impacted by student enrollment numbers nor are, is currently the state funding formula. Madam President, Members of the Board, Mr. Heath, I ask that items B through H and addendums be acted on in one motion.
So moved.
Second. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Ms. Payne?
Yes.
Ms. Apolo?
Yes.
Ms. Jessling?
Yes.
Ms. Marchaza?
Yes.
Ms. Cook?
Yes.
Motion's carry 5-0. That concludes my section of the agenda.
Thank you very much. Next, we have unfinished business. The first item, I asked Mr. Heath to give us an update on our SSO contract.
Yeah, just a couple of quick things. We met with the School Safety Board Liaison Group on October 30. We discussed some of the revised language that we got from our attorneys on the contract that we're hoping to enter into with the City of Mentor on these SSOs. I sent that contract language over to Mr. Filippiac and Chief Gunch on October 31. I know there are still a couple of items that are somewhat restrictive when it comes to the actions an SSO can take based on the language in the contract. So I had discussed that with Chief Gunch. We happened to have a phone call about another issue here just a couple of weeks ago and kind of talked through some of those possibilities. And I've sent that language over to them to take a look at, to hopefully resolve some of those issues. Did give them a couple more dates to try and meet here, either right before or right after Thanksgiving so that we can get that wrapped up. I think we are getting very, very, very close now, so we're excited about that.
Thank you. I also spoke with Mr. Filippiac about that as well, and he, you know, is definitely open to working things out with us, so.
And again, I think the one thing, and again, Mrs. Payne and Mrs. Cook are the liaisons for that School Safety Committee, and I think we've discussed the risks at length now. And I think we've got a pretty good sense from across the board that we want to get this done. I expressed those sentiments to Mr. Filippiac and Chief Gunch when I sent them over. The language changes, too.
Mr. Heath, if it would be beneficial for Ms. Cook and I to be in that meeting, I'd be happy to join.
Okay. I'll let you know how it goes.
Thank you. Moving on to new business, we have, oh, I'm sorry, no, no. Unfinished business. The second item in the discussion is for Senate Bill 104. Mr. Heath, can you start us off?
Yeah, just so everyone knows, you know, as we've done this far, we'll make sure that we're in compliance with the law. We're getting regular updates from legal counsel on the bill, and we'll keep you guys posted as we're going through the next three weeks here prior to our December meeting. Literally, we have a weekly meeting with our legal counsel to talk through some of these issues, and he's been very proactive, actually was doing a presentation on Senate Bill 104 implications and was able to send us those slides before he even did the presentation itself. So we're getting regular updates on that. But again, we will follow whatever the law dictates to us.
Great, thank you. As we open- As we open up discussion, I know we have, we want to have discussion on Senate Bill 104, and then we have House Bill 4, 4, 5, and I know we have, just the interest of being productive and respectful dialogue, I ask that just every person on the board allows, if you want to speak, that's great, we hope to have good dialogue, but let everyone else speak before we take a second turn. And of course, we'll have unlimited turns, but just please let everyone have a chance to speak before we continue. With Senate Bill 104, we do have new legislation, and that is expected to be signed by Governor DeWine, as Ms. Marchaza outlined for us today. Senate Bill 104 will impact the College Credit Plus, and it will also designate multiple occupancy facilities in public schools and higher education as designated for biological males and biological females. In anticipation of Governor DeWine's approval, it is prudent for us as the board to discuss compliance, and as an elected official, I did take an oath to follow the Constitution and the laws of the land, and I do support following this law if it is enacted. The failure to follow laws puts men or public schools at risk for losing funding and lawsuits, and I will protect men or public schools by following the laws. This is consistent with my stance on March 14th, 2023, where I supported following the law. At that time, our legal advisors cautioned us that failure to follow laws could jeopardize $5 to $6 million in federal funding. And because we are dependent on this funding for special education, for tutoring, and free and reduced lunches, jeopardizing this money is not fair to our taxpayers. As laws change, we need to adapt. We do not have a current policy that contradicts this mandate, and as a board member, I would charge Superintendent Heath with ensuring that all communication is compliant with the law. Mr. Heath, I ask that you inform the board of any potential compliance challenges with Senate Bill 104 and recommendations on how they can be addressed. Would anyone else like to discuss Senate Bill 104?
Yeah, I'll go ahead. Thank you for giving kind of a rundown of what that, what this bill is, and that it is anticipated to be signed, to be signed, whether he signs it or not, to go into law. Before I discuss it, when you say, and while I have the floor, is it okay if I ask quick Q and A's just for some of you, to some of you, so I don't lose the floor? But when you say following the law, does that mean committed to creating a policy?
I don't feel creating a policy is necessary. We don't have a policy now.
Okay.
But I'm committed to making sure that we follow the law.
Okay.
So we will create procedures that follow the law. I expect us to completely follow the law.
Okay. So first, I understand the recent and impending laws, as they pertain to transgender community bringing disappointment and frustration to many. I have compassion for everyone that is affected. Now, should Senate Bill 104 become law, I have no doubt that our administrators, teachers, and staff members will help those affected to navigate these changes. When dealing with new policies, three meetings are required, from what I understand, what I've been told now. The first is to have discussion, another meeting to have a first reading, and then another meeting for, to vote. My intention, and I'll speak for myself, but in kind of getting the ball rolling in advance to this becoming a law is so that the district has time to prepare for these changes and can create a plan of action to support the students who are affected by it. Despite our disagreements, I believe this board is committed to ensuring the safety and well-being of every student while complying with the law. So I appreciate hearing that you, you know, obviously, we don't really have a choice. We have to follow the law. Because our Neola updates are coming up, and we do not, Mr. Heath, there is not a bathroom type bill that we can use with the Neola updates, is that correct?
So they've got the, actually, no, they do not have a current law or a current policy that we would be looking at.
Okay.
Obviously, we would, they're very well aware that this is coming into law, and I'm sure they're actively writing policy as we speak. The one other thing, kind of to your point with the, you know, the three different meetings that would be needed, and obviously, we've got three months to kind of get that done still. But if we got into a time crunch, a special meeting could be, could be called as well.
Okay.
And it's not, real quick, too, Ms. Iapolo, it's not uncommon for Neola when there are many laws that get passed during this time of year, for them to do a special release in February.
Okay. And, Mr. Heath, do you believe that there, we would, do you suggest a policy to make things easier to comply with this law?
Again, we don't have a policy now. We just follow the law. It could be a policy, it could be an administrative guideline, could be.
Well, there's not a law.
A change in handbook language, whatever.
But there's not a law right now about, with the bathrooms, so we're just following.
Title IX regulations. That's what we're, that's what we're following.
So my other question, then, with concerning the kind of, under the same umbrella, House Bill 68, is there an intention to have a policy for that? Because it is law, and we don't have a policy for it. The SAFE Act and sports?
Tell me more.
Okay. It's the Saving Adolescents from Experimentation Act and Save Women's Sports Act that was passed. I think, remember, DeWine vetoed it, they overwrote it, and then there were some court stays, but it is now law, so.
So we just continue to follow what the OHSAA puts the guidance out, and they had put the stay on any transgender athletes participating in sports back at the beginning of the year. So we're continuing to follow that.
Okay. There's other portions of that that have to do with counselors, so I just, I, that's something that I feel we were already behind on. So the delay in that House Bill 68 and not having a policy is what kind of created a sense of urgency here for this bathroom bill. So, and because Neola doesn't have a policy for either of these, we do need, eventually, we would need, if we were to have a policy, Legal to draft something. And this is why we kind of took the initiative to have Legal get the ball rolling. Mrs. Payne found a bathroom policy from Alita in Ohio, and they've been using it since January of 2024 with no issues. We would need to add some language to that, and we were in head discussions with Legal over that. We need to add in overnight accommodations. That's not, that wasn't in the Alita policy, and make sure that the effective date would of, if something we would prepare, what we asked Legal to prepare, would be, would follow the law. So in the event there's a court, the courts intervene, then it doesn't affect us. We would be compliant. But that's so that we're set up and ready to go when that does become law. And, you know, that's why we asked Legal to take that existing policy and just make some minor adjustments, so make sure we're in compliance. Legal did agree that we can use that effective date of the law to be the effective day of the policy. That way, you know, like I said, if there is a stay placed from the court, we will be covered. We had hoped to have this ready for us to discuss as a board tonight, to make changes if necessary, so we can be ready to go. And unfortunately, you know, Mr. Heath, you, I'm not sure why you intervened to our request that were by two board members. I felt that in doing so and reaching out to our president and vice president, that put us violating the Open Meetings Act. And, you know, this, I feel like this is an infringement on our ability to do our job, and the fact that our request was denied is concerning, and I certainly plan on taking this up with Legal because we don't have a policy or a bylaw saying that we need, that one board member has more power. We don't have, like I said, we have no, we have no policy or bylaw stating that you, that our president or vice president have authority over other board members to access our board attorney. So this is very concerning. All board members have equal power and the right to seek the resources that we need to do our job, and that is a bylaw that we have. So that is something that needs to be worked out, I think, in the future. There's no reason that we shouldn't push through these policies for these two, for House Bill 68 and 104, when we do these Neola updates coming up. And like you said, we do have, we have three months, and we have about three meetings. So it would, by the time we got everything ready to go, you know, the policy would be in, the law would be in effect. So, you know, I'm not sure, we'll hear, I'll get to hear from everybody else. It sounds like Mrs. Cook is opposed to having a policy, which concerns me a little bit. I know in the past, Ms. Marchaza, you had mentioned the board handles the what and the administrators handle the how. If we don't have a policy, how are our administrators supposed to have guidelines? How are they supposed to dictate to their staff and to parents? And how are we supposed to discipline if we don't have a policy to go by? Policies ensure the district adheres to the requirements of the new law. It reduces the risk of legal penalties or lawsuits. We're board members, we get sued, my name's on there, I don't feel good about not having a policy. A written policy translates the law into clear, actionable steps for our administrators, teachers, and staff, and having a policy in place demonstrates good faith in complying with legal obligations, potentially mitigating legal risks. You know, I'll, I can go on and on. I don't know why these particular laws, potential law, why this isn't something because it's such a litigious issue, why we wouldn't want to protect the district and have a policy. I'm interested in hearing from everybody to see what your reasoning is.
Anybody else? Did you want to speak on that, Mrs. Payne?
Yeah, I didn't know if, okay. It looked like you were going for your microphone, so. Okay, so I agree with Mrs. Iapolo. I think we need a policy effective, you know, we could start working on it now, but I would like to have reassurance from the board that they would support a written policy. This issue has been a concern in the past, so in March of 2023, a significant number of parents rallied behind a resolution that I had proposed with the backing of former board member Tom Tuttle. This resolution mirrored the State Board of Education's stance titled "To Oppose the Proposed Changes to Title IX and to Affirm Parental Rights and Local Control of Ohio K-12 Education." It did include language that would have enabled us to publicly oppose the inclusion of biological boys and girls' bathrooms and locker rooms and in girl's sports. While a similar resolution passed unanimously in the neighboring Riverside District, mind you, they do have a very split board, but it passed unanimously on that resolution, our board chose not to support it, resulting in a two to three vote, which I respected that decision. But I did subsequently advocate for House Bill 183. I wrote written testimony in support of it because I felt like this was a topic that really needed to be addressed, since we decided locally, we weren't going to, you know, do anything different here. I respected that, but then I took my position to the State House and advocated there. So although the bill awaits Governor DeWine's signature, I think it's crucial that we prepare to draft a policy once the bill is enacted. To build a strong foundation of support, we must appeal to the majority. The data from the latest election for our specific district indicates that the successful candidates shared the same ideology that's reflected in Senate Bill 104. Our previous levy did not pass, our Additional Funds Permanent Improvement Levy. We are considering, as you heard tonight, placing it back on the ballot in spring or fall, but without making any changes that resonate with the majority of taxpayers in our district, we cannot expect different outcomes. Moreover, the recent election data reveals that our community is not as centrist as we previously believed. We had a high voter turnout at the last election in Mentor of over 80% for presidential votes especially. Now, while Trump garnered 57% of the vote, Harris received 43%. Bernie Moreno did win by about 5% as well. He held a very strong stance on this subject. I'm sure we all saw the commercials, and we were probably all at that point done listening to them, whatever side you were on. But it's imperative that we implement changes before we approach voters again for their support in their, in our new funding levy. In Ohio, some additional data as well, I think this was provided by Mr. Wade, I think it was from OSBA, the data about the levy passage and failures. So in Ohio, 50 out of 68 renewal levies passed. That's a 73% pass rate. Only 22 out of 72 additional funds levies passed, which is a 30% pass rate. These numbers are pretty alarming, and we have to do our best to appeal to the majority of taxpayers, especially since almost 80% of our budget comes from our local taxpayers. I think tonight we saw about 70, but still, the vast majority comes from our local taxpayers. This is one change that I see that we can make, because we need to garner some support from our community. We can't continue to make these decisions that go in opposition of our community and then expect a different outcome when we ask them for more funding. I do want to also address, Mr. Heath, I believe you've stated at previous board meetings that we do have gender-neutral single stalls, at least one of them in every single one of our schools. We do. Okay. So that, I think that's helpful to note, especially once this passes, you know, that there's an option there. So my question also is, you know, without policy, how are we going to apply any disciplinary measures for those students or staff who violate this new law? If a student does not comply and uses the bathroom of their gender identity, which we heard a speaker speak about tonight, apparently, there's a parent who's already gone out and said, "My child will not use the bathroom," you know, that corresponds with their biological sex. So in that scenario, without a policy, I'm assuming it wouldn't be in the student handbook, because we need policy that drives the student handbook. Policy drives administrative guidelines. So I'm not quite sure, other than pseudo-policies that aren't really policies, and I don't know what other options we would have to enforce this. And could you tell me, without policy, what would be the disciplinary action for a student who identifies as a boy, as a girl, but is a biological boy, and then proceeds to continue to use the women's facility, locker room, bathroom, whatnot? Can you tell me what?
Yeah, we don't, we don't have the answer to that yet. Obviously, from a disciplinary standpoint, there would have to be some sort of consequences if a state law is being violated.
Can you have disciplinary action by the school without policy, without any kind of student handbook update?
You could. It'd be insubordination.
Because everything is still part of the code of conduct, and it would be tied to some sort of code that we would have in there. So it'd be very easy to figure out what part of the code of conduct we would tie it to. From a consequence standpoint, that discussion hasn't taken place yet, though.
Okay. I think, you know, for me, I think we need a policy. I don't see why we wouldn't. It has been such a contentious issue in our community, and if we're going to follow the law anyways, why don't we just write a policy so that the majority of people can get behind us, rally behind us for a future levy and support us again?
Mrs. Jessling? I happen to be at that meeting in March of 2023. It was our four hour and 15 minute, very lengthy. At the time that that resolution was presented, I asked Mr. Tuttle what the source was, who wrote that. He's only told me that, Mrs. Payne, you'd given it to him, but he didn't know where it came from. And I asked on the floor where it came from, but I didn't get an answer. So I don't know what the source of that Shea resolution was, but I do know it came with some caveats that it didn't have any force of law, that it was, and I know how contentious it was from September through December until they had another version of it written. But regardless, the fact that we are committed to following the law is the most important consideration in my mind. It's the overriding rule that governs everything we do as a district. So as we follow the law prior to this, once this SB 104 goes into effect, then any changes that we need in terms of, if Neola comes up with a policy of some sort, or if there are other considerations from an administrative point of view, those will be made clear to us. Because at the same time, the College Credit Plus guidelines, I think there were some tweaks in that, so that will also be part of the whole guidance for how we enact that because those have a lot of deadlines in the College Credit Plus for application, parent signatures, and so forth. So whatever any of this encompasses, I am absolutely committed to following the law. And I agree that, you know, as a district, our duty is to be sure that we are compliant. And that's an overriding thing beyond things like district policy, but just following the law in general. So I would hope that Mr. Heath, once we have a decision from the governor or it goes into effect, whatever's going to happen with. into effect, whatever's going to happen with SB 104, that he would let us know where we have areas that need to be shored up or modified, and that, because we are subscribers to Neola, so we're already paying for that service, and we're like hundreds of other districts in the state, all of us are waiting for those same guidelines. I don't see that it makes any sense to draft a policy without all the information. Well, a policy would be offered to us, or not, depending on what's advised, because sometimes there are even pros and cons to how it's written and what is written. And that's what we have our attorney available for in addition to our Neola guidelines. So I feel like we're premature until this is law. And if we need to have a special session, a special meeting, because there's an urgency that our regular board meetings won't allow us to act in timely fashion, then we would do that. And Mr. Heath would make sure that the administrators, all of the staff are familiar with what the law is, any modifications to what has been and what is current, and that they would be given guidelines through the student handbook as well. So there's a lot of moving parts, but until we know date certain of what's going to happen, I don't understand why there's an urgency until we know what the governor is going to advise, or if it's something, even court cases. I'm assuming it's going to be enacted, but we don't know that quite yet. It'll be soon, obviously.
Do you want to go first? Do you want me to go next?
Sure. Oh, yeah, I mean, I'm inclined to agree for all sorts of reasons, including those just outlined by Mrs. Jessling. So I want to start out with a question, if I may, for Mr. Heath, and then continue with it. Okay. So, Mr. Heath, you said that we would use the code of conduct to meet out any discipline that is necessary. I mean, there are laws that we follow without policies, right? That's kind of what I want to hear about. How do we follow those laws? How do we stay in compliance with them if we don't have a policy on the books?
We look closely at what our code of conduct says. Again, any behavior we can tie to some sort of code. And really, I think the work that we need to do as a district administrative team is look through, okay, what are our consequences for this type of violation moving forward, since this would be something new to us at this point in time?
Okay. And in the absence of having a Neola policy, sorry, second question, and then I'll be done with questions. In the absence of having a Neola policy, would we then have to pay our attorney to create a policy around this topic?
Yeah, so again, I think a couple of action steps for me right now, coming out of the initial part of this discussion, is one, to ask Neola if they have the policy language working right now. If they don't, that's when we could, if directed by the board, to start looking into what policy language we might consider. That's when we would incorporate our legal counsel into that sort of conversation. I was able to pull the ALIDA policy here right now, since I had not seen that official language yet. So I was able to pull that into a Google Doc as a starting point. And if, just to make sure I've got this down correctly, too, from my direction, we would also need the addition of the overnight trips included. Is that the other piece? Okay. And then obviously, our other steps will be to make sure we've got a plan of action for the students that are going to be impacted by the passage of the bill. And then working through that communication piece with all of the board members, with our families, and our students moving forward. So I think I've got four to-do things on the list right now.
Already busy before he leaves the meeting. Thank you. So, you know, that alone, that tells me we're going to need to rack up some billable hours of taxpayer dollars that we would need to create a policy around this if Neola's is not available. So already, we're spending attorney's fees on something that it doesn't sound like we need quite yet, or maybe not at all, if this passes into law and we're able to execute on it like we have with HB 68 or even other laws that are in existence that we do not have policies for. So in addition to just being practically minded and being careful with our spending in taxpayer dollars, you know, I think that what I learned, I learned a lot at the OSBA conference, and I hope we get a chance to talk, I want to report out about the delegates' meeting and so on, but they spent a lot, I went to a lot of the legal sessions, and they spent a lot of time talking about gender identity issues in the law and Title IX. And so there was a lot of discussion, and what my biggest takeaway from that was that this situation is very fluid and that this is a very thorny issue, very controversial for some folks, that we are watching our courts grapple with in real time. And that's how the law is supposed to work. That is how our courts are supposed to work. For that reason, because it is so fluid and because it is not yet finalized, and probably never will be finalized, because that's just how the law works, I don't think that it is wise for us to put in writing at this time. And in fact, that is what the attorney suggested. Let's see how this plays out. There's very likely going to be lawsuits flying again, there already are, and not commit to a policy right now. If it's the law, we follow the law. We all swore an oath to uphold it. We will follow it, no question. In the meantime, we watch, we wait, we stay in touch with our legal counsel and take his advice, and we try to contact him as little as possible so we don't rack up dollars upon dollars of spending, which we have seen skyrocket over the last three years. So the overall advice, too, by, from OSBA, I want to point out as well, and just kind of center this discussion a little bit more, make it less about bathrooms and more about kids, is that, you know, at the heart of this issue are students, are minors, are children, and families. And to me, that is what we continue to lose sight of. I want to make sure that we are looking out for these families. These kids have basically become a political football for the past three years, and it is heartbreaking to watch some of these kids go through what they've been through. So I want to make sure, you know, let's discuss this, sure. What are we doing to protect these kids and their families? What are we doing to support them from a mental health perspective? That is our first priority. That is who we should be looking out for. They have been at the center of this legal fight, this board fight, for years now, and I have deep concerns about their well-being. So again, all very fluid. OSBA attorneys and other attorneys who presented last week said, "Be sure to talk to your admins. Be sure to talk to your staff, your teachers, your supervisors, your guidance counselors. Ensure they've got the right training to handle things once, if this law goes into place." And make sure we know what is actually happening on the ground, in the bathrooms, in the classrooms, in our guidance counselors' offices. And make sure we know what's actually happening and what is actually an issue. Involve our school counselors very early in the process. So I hope that we are doing that. If we're not yet, I really recommend that we do. So those are my thoughts. Thank you.
I just have some follow-up. So how exactly, without a policy, and again, when we were talking about how, when we met with or spoke with them legal, the intention is obviously, in other words, post-dating, you know, whatever he came up with, because we knew it would take time, for the, for the bill to become a law. So we're not trying to push anything ahead of time, we're just trying to be prepared. How can you ensure compliance with staff, with our crossroads counselors, without having a policy to point to? I feel like that's putting the district at risk. You know, we have another reason for my sense of urgency, is we have that portion of the bill that would say, you know, overnight stays, and we have spring trips coming up. So, you know, I don't want to, I don't want to risk that that bill goes into law and we're not prepared. And I think, I understand wanting, you know, wanting to, I don't want to feel like we're pushing this, but I think I've listed some good reasons why. But I think it's, we can't forget that things are going to change here in January. The Title IX is anticipated to change. The, you know, there's really no, I mean, yes, there may be some court stays, but if the thought in Columbus is that if Senate, if House Bill 68 was able to go through and become law, then this bathroom bill will be law regardless of what happens in court. So I just, you know, I can't, can you point to another highly litigious law that affects education and the kids that we do not have a policy for? Anybody?
House Bill 68?
We need to, we need one.
Well, you asked.
Right, but prior to this, these two, these subjects, I feel like, I feel like we're treating, I feel like, and correct me if I'm wrong, but there's no urgency or desire to have one, it's almost a way of, how do I want to put this? Well, sending a message that, you know, we're going to follow the law, but we're not, we're not, you know. What I'm hearing, Ms. Marchesa, what you had said about the kids that have gone through this, I, my heart goes out to our students who this affects. But what I never hear up here is the students who have been for the last, how many years, that we've had allowed open bathrooms, who've lost their privacy, their right to privacy, who have anxiety, who have, who just withhold from using the bathroom in this. Let's not forget that that's the majority of the students, and we have to worry about them as well, and their parents. And we know that the community wants this. Why would we not create a policy to show that we, not only are we going to comply, but we're going to take the appropriate steps to make sure that the staff and everybody, you know, has proper guidelines? It just, to me, it smells like you're protecting this group, and I think that that's, I don't think that that's right. And my, again, my name's on here if we get sued. And, you know, that would, what would be the first thing in a lawsuit that they would point to us is, why didn't you create a policy to protect, to make, to ensure that every single person in the building, and all the parents and all the students are aware of what those guidelines are? So I, you know, I just, I think it's very negligent, and, you know, I can't, I don't, I'd like to, I'd be interested to see, besides House Bill 68, which that is brand-new, where we just decided to say, "We'll follow the law," but we don't back it up with a policy.
Yeah, I just have some additional notes as well. Obviously, I agree with Mrs. Iapolo. And to Ms. Marchesa's point about OSBA, I sat in some of those classes, too. Now, one of them I did have to walk out of because I had just about enough of the two lawyers critiquing parents and giving such a bad connotation to parents who have fought for their children to not have to use bathrooms with other genders. So they were continuing to make, and Rose was in the, in that conference with me, we both ended up walking out with a handful of people, because they had, the one person had stated, the lawyer that was teaching the class, said, "You know, I'm from Michigan, and I want to apologize on behalf of, you know, Betsy DeVos." And then she continued to say, "Oh, look at these parents defending education, parents protecting, you know, children." These are all people who were pursuing litigation and suing schools for allowing, you know, boys into girls bathrooms, vice versa, or hiding, transitioning from parents, asking kids pronouns, things like that. And they continued to make a mockery out of those parents. So I was in those same classes, too, but I unfortunately had to leave out of one of them because I'm not going to sit there and allow people to make those statements about parents who are pursuing avenues to protect their children. So also, to Rose's point, yes, we want to ensure that those children who identify as a different gender have somewhere to go to the bathroom, which we do have the single stalls. I think that's a great option. But we cannot forget about the other kids who feel uncomfortable. We've received emails with parents whose kids are not using the restroom, they're getting urinary tract infections. Some kids have been through some pretty terrible situations, and they do not want another gender coming into their bathroom. It's already uncomfortable for them to be in there alone anyways, to be in there, you know, with other folks, rather. So, you know, I also think, taking this argument, the argument that we're making is not to talk about whether we support or don't support the bill. The argument that we're making is not about that. That would be a straw man fallacy. We can't take an argument and change it into something else so that you gain support for your side. We're not doing that. I'm not going to do that. I'm stating, I think with Rose as well, that we would like to have, once this goes into effect, we would like to have a policy reflecting the changes that are going to be required by the state. I don't understand the pushback, I really don't. I don't get, there's risks if we don't put a policy together. I don't understand the risk if we do put a policy together. I think that we have a huge opportunity cost here. If we don't make a policy, I think we're going to lose support. We can't afford to lose any more support. Private schools have already, you know, gone up 250 kids last year, between last year and this year. We cannot continue to go down this route of not appealing to the majority of voters and think that we're going to continue to have their support.
I don't think we're saying anything about a policy or no policy. What we're saying is, we're on the brink of all of the districts in the state being in the same position where a change in the law may necessitate a dramatic change in buildings. And as we've all stated, we are going to follow the law. That's not up for question or debate, that that's the rule. So everybody who's a Neola subscriber is going to have the same need, rather than, you know, maybe two weeks from now, everything will be firmed up, maybe tomorrow afternoon, everything will be firmed up. Whatever the timeframe is, once that 90-day clock begins ticking, we will engage with our Neola representative, because everybody's going to be looking for that same guidance. So I, I'm not objecting to doing whatever they advise is the best course of action in order to protect students, the well-being of the district, and clarity for everyone. So in my mind, to write a policy proactively or take another one and ask the attorney to go over it may not reflect even some final details of the law. Maybe it will, I don't know. But we're this close to SB 104 being signed into law, and that's when we should develop whatever the, is the best guidance to make it easier. Mr. Heath may have a preference. He may want, you know, based on how that's going to be rolled out. One of the things, I re-listened to that meeting from 2023. At the time that we discussed these matters, there were concerns about facilities, that there would be a single-stall bathroom, for example, in every building. But a building as large as the high school may not have any reasonably accessible facility for after-school basketball games, for example. So we may need to develop a plan to provide more facilities. And that was a discussion we had almost two years ago, but I don't think we've moved forward on that because we haven't had additional resources to invest, and there were no resources attached to this bill, as I understand it. I don't think there's any money attached to this.
No, that's correct.
So those are other important considerations. And I'm not saying not to follow the law, I want to be clear about that. But, you know, in order to make sure that we do the best job for all concerned, I say we give it a couple of weeks and see where this lands, and then get started on doing whatever we need to make sure that our student handbooks are compliant, that our staff is trained and prepared, and that- and prepared, and that, you know, it would make sense too to have a conversation at the administrative level with families and students so that everybody is on the same page and is clear as to what the plan is.
I think that approach is so much more thorough than jumping to a policy that, I understand that the two of you saw it, we haven't seen it, we haven't heard any details on it, and we don't know what the final version of the law will be. I believe it will be enacted. And again, complete agreement with compliance. To your point with how do administrators have guidelines if they don't know what the parameters are, and that would be by following the law. Right now, we are following the law with Title IX. We don't have it in policy and we never asked for it to be in policy and nor did you. So when, when it wasn't what you wanted, you didn't ask for it to be in policy then for clarity. And now that you see it differently, it has changed. So I don't have a problem with following legal guidance, seeing how things lie. By next month, we might be looking at policy. But right now, looking at a policy that our lawyers haven't looked at, our Neola, we haven't seen where Neola is, we haven't seen what we need in our district. I asked Mr. Heath to look at what compliance issues we may have. And by that, I mean, you know, we have a play here and all of the other halls are closed. We have a biological male bathroom, a biological female bathroom. I don't think we have a family bathroom in this area. So what, what, how will we create compliance in things like this? Similarly, when there's a football game at our football stadium, at our basketball stadium. So we need to look at things and when we're building our solutions to be compliant, because we must be compliant with the law, there's a lot more to consider. And I do appreciate that we have this discussion now because I think it is important for us to be compliant. It's going to take some time. Some of these issues that I just mentioned might, might take more than three months, honestly, and might take money. So we're going to have to look at some things. Unfortunately, this bill doesn't have funding that comes with it to help us be compliant, but maybe we can talk to our legislators about that as well.
I just, let me reiterate.
Actually, it's, I believe it's my turn to speak. I didn't get to speak second time yet, so. Madam President, those are all great points. I do want to add one other thing is, because you mentioned football games and, you know, a lot of community members, adults, come to those games as well, and so we would need to think about accommodations for those folks too, not just students in that sense. So, you know, I'm disappointed that Mrs. Payne and Mrs. Ziapolo didn't stick around for those sessions because if they had, they would have heard that those parents who are litigants in those lawsuits are having trouble with getting, with them being successful because they don't have standing. And what that means is that they have failed again and again to show actual injury because it's, they're not their children. They're filing, filing these lawsuits because they're upset with the policy, not because they have standing and the ability to show that there's been some injury made on their children. So again, learned a lot in those sessions and I really appreciated being able to go. So very grateful to the taxpayers for helping us do that. Again, this is a very fluid situation. Anything we can do to save costs, as we saw from Mr. Wade's presentation today, is going to be important. We need to keep that front and center as well, be responsible with our spending. This does not look like a practical way to move forward. I'm definitely in favor of waiting.
Anybody else want to go a second time?
Yep.
Okay. I just want to correct you. I don't know if you were talking to me or who you were talking to, saying that we wanted a different policy before, but it wasn't, when it didn't, wasn't in our favor. I never, people wanted a policy keeping, we wanted what this law is giving us. We wanted a policy protecting privacy in bathrooms. So I don't know what you were talking about before, but that, I didn't ask, I'm not flip-flapping, is what I'm saying. You know, the whole point in us getting the ball rolling early is because of all those things you just said. It's going to take some time to figure out how we're going to accommodate everybody. So, you know, we're splitting hairs here. It's going to, it's, it's going to be law and we have to, you keep saying we have, we're going to comply. You don't, you don't really have a choice. So yes, that is, I figured that, but, you know, we have possibly 90 days and we, there's a lot to figure out. So I'm just trying to say we need to be on top of it. And again, especially after Mr. Wade's presentation, this is one more way to gain trust from our community and we know what's down the pipeline. We know what's down, we know what's coming. There's big changes, the pendulum has swung. I don't understand why, you know, if you want it, fine, we want to wait a couple, we want to wait a little bit, that's fine. We will have a special meeting, we will, we will continue to fight and push for a policy so that we have a smooth rollout and that we, we're not liable. Because I don't want my name, I don't want to be sued because some parent sues because they, you know, nobody knew that there was a policy. I looked it up and it was fine, so I told my kid they can go on in. So, you know, again, this is going to, this is going to be in front of us and it's not going away. And, you know, I will continue to push, to do what we do for every major law that affects our students in our buildings and have a policy.
I just want to reiterate that, because there was a comment made insinuating that we have to provide single stalls. I don't believe in the bill that it says we have to provide single stalls. It states, I think, that we, that the individual who may be identifying as a different gender has a choice to use single-stall bathrooms or the bathroom that their, their biological sex is in accordance with. So I don't think we have to go and change all these bathrooms per the law, just to reiterate that point. I didn't propose an actual policy, it was a resolution, clearly from the meeting with the resolution meeting, it was very clear that we weren't willing to write a policy. So why would I go and try to write a policy when that meeting was very clear that there were three people who were in opposition to the resolution and to the idea of doing anything different? And we keep saying it's the law. There's no one law that it points to, just for clarification. We're following case law from many discussions that I've had with legal and with Mr. Heath. There's no one law that's like, you got to follow this. It's case law, it's based on a Sixth Circuit Court decision that was made several years ago. Am I correct, Mr. Heath? Yeah? Okay, so I think, you know, Jenny, Lauren, Maggie, if we could get your buy-in that yes, you would support, once, we could, I'm fine with like, let's not write anything up until it becomes law, but once it becomes law, are you guys willing, even if Neola doesn't have a policy, are you guys willing to create a policy? That's what the discussion is tonight. I'd like to ensure that we have some support to write a policy for that. I know, Jenny, you had mentioned you're not opposed to it, but are you for writing a policy? Once it goes into effect, once we actually have the verbiage, the final passage, if DeWine was to sign it tomorrow, and our legal counsel, which I know, Ms. Marchesa, you made some comments, we actually had a lengthy discussion with him, we're not supposed to discuss all of the legal counsel advice because that then violates attorney-client privilege. So we have to be very careful with what we say, because we were also told different information, so, you know, we have to be careful with that. But I would like to know, are you guys okay with writing a policy? Once the bill is enacted, let's say it's enacted tomorrow, DeWine signs the bill, are you guys going to support writing a policy?
I'm absolutely not committing to that right now.
I appreciate your honesty.
Yep, sure.
I don't know enough about what would be any downside of having a written policy. There have been plenty of times over the course of my board service where I just made an assumption like, well, you would do this. And then the legal voices that we work with would point out something that I wasn't familiar with, that creates a nuance or another perspective that I'm not qualified to say. What I would say is this, that this will likely become law if Neola and our attorney would advise creating a policy that would govern these actions or not, I would follow their advice. Because, again, I'm not an attorney, I don't have any kind of a legal training that would give me the expertise that would be important. Our attorney and Neola work to help create clarity in governance and to also limit concerns and liability. So to me, that, that makes the most sense. And as somebody who's in favor of the best practices for our district, as I, I think everybody here is committed to that. We might have different approaches or different viewpoints, but I, I don't think any of us want to put the district in jeopardy, students in jeopardy. That's why I brought up the, the discussion that we had in March of 2023, because there was a recognition that we may have some facilities issues. And I agree, that's not something we could, I don't care if we came up with something tonight, you know, the planning and budgeting for something as dramatic as any kind of facility, the price tag I thought we had bandied about one time was like, it's $50,000 to create a single-stall bathroom. That's a lot of money. So, and I, I don't know what the, the final outcome will be for all this, but I am prudent enough and supportive enough that I would be on board with whatever is advised by Neola and our lawyer.
I would agree with that as well. If, if our lawyer says this is imperative, I follow the legal advice, I'm here to protect the district. So if our lawyer says it's imperative to create a policy, then that's, that's what we're charged to do.
If our lawyer doesn't say it's imperative, but says that he would, he would be totally, you know, in, fine with it, he'd be able to defend it, it makes sense, but he's not like, you have to do this. Because that's typically, in my, my experience, it's been, he gives us the options and says like, hey, this one has a little bit more risk, this one doesn't. He doesn't really tell us what to do. He gives us the options and then we're able to make that decision as a board because he's not on the board, he doesn't make that decision, we do.
Well, I think we're splitting hairs with that. I, I would have to hear what he says. You know, yes, there's, sometimes there's some gray areas and I guess it would have to, I'd have to hear the risks and the benefits. It's really hard for me to make that decision when I haven't spoke with him at all on that. So I guess I have to reserve my judgment right now, but I'm open to, you know, hearing all of the options and weighing the, listening to his advice or, and Neola's.
Just to make sure I've got my to-do list in place one more time, because I added a couple of things. So I'm going to be, I actually already reached out to Neola to see where their timelines are on policy language for Senate Bill 104. I'm also going to ask about House Bill 68, if they've got Neola policy on that. And I'm assuming when we get to new business, we'll want to know about House Bill 445 as well. So I've got those three things on there. I will be talking to legal counsel about risks, both from putting a policy in place and for not putting a policy in place and just kind of get some legal standpoint there. We will be working with our administrative teams on the plans of action for the impacted students when this bill is officially signed into law. And then also working with the administrative team on the disciplinary consequences for students violating that law. And then final piece is I will continue to communicate with the board on all of the policy language and the plans for what I'm going to assume are all three of these items. Senate Bill 104, House Bill 68, House Bill 445. Did I capture everything?
Yes, well done.
All right. And we'll continue to do that. Obviously, our next board meeting is December 10th. So I know we've got about, it's a quick turnaround because we're a little bit later this month, so we've got about three weeks here. Obviously, there will be movement with, with all of these as we move forward, but we'll make sure that we continue to give you updates. And if, if it's one of those situations like we've done the last couple of weeks here where there's like a midweek update that needs to go out, I'll make sure and do those as well, just to make sure that that communication is as timely as possible then too.
Can I, can I have one thing on this subject? So the upcoming policy committee that Lauren and I are part of?
Yes.
I don't, I don't know how beneficial that is, because, correct me if I'm wrong, we're going to do what we did last time and just go through it. And I found some of the updates and that there's quite a bit. So we speak about that, or we review them and some of them we can't talk about because if I've talked to another board member, or she has talked to another board member about them, we can't discuss that, because that's an, right, that's an open meetings violation. So is it, should we just get together as a board and go through all those together since we have to do that anyways? I'm not really sure.
I also have some comments on that too, because if our, if we're saying we have to have discussion first, before we ever have a first reading, I never see those policies until it is a first reading, because I'm not on the committee. So I think we have to align across the board. If that's what we're saying we need to do, discussion, first reading, second reading, final vote, you know, on the second reading, then I think that we need to align that as well, which when, if we have the committee, that would be committee meeting, board meeting, first reading, second reading. I think that's redundant.
Or is the committee meeting, does, because there's just two of us, count as a discussion? In that process?
That potentially could count as a discussion. I think that was one of the reasons when we got into the, the Neola policies, knowing that they had updates twice a year, that we would put those in front of everyone that's part of that board policy liaison committee to, to make sure that we've got the right language. And there are some things, obviously, that we would be tossing out to, to the group for our first reading that nobody's seen yet, where we tried to mirror what that Neola policy manual creation process was, where we had two board members on each of the chapters to kind of go through and wordsmith some of that ahead of time so that, yeah, at least there was some board input into what we were putting out for the first reading. So that was the purpose of it. If we don't think that's necessary, I'm more than happy to take a meeting off my schedule.
Well, I think too, to that point, you know, if we're going to call that a discussion, then what's the difference between me and Rose going to the attorney and saying, hey, we want to propose a policy for a first reading and we don't have discussion first? I think we just, whatever we do, we need to align it. You know, if we're going to say we need discussion, it should be, we need discussion with the whole board, across the board, every time.
Can I have some clarification? I was under the understanding that when it went to policy committee, it was not new policy that we've never seen, it was update to current policy. Is that incorrect?
Yeah, the only additions might be something similar to what we're discussing right now. You know, Neola potentially could put out some new policy that is based off of a new law that was passed. So those would be part of those conversations then, if, if we keep the current structure.
So when we had our board governance meeting, we had discussed as a group and we were all in agreement that when we were proposing something new or we wanted to discuss a topic, that we would initiate that in new business and we would, we would discuss it in, in new business so that everyone heard the discussion. And we weren't keeping that from being off the agenda, that it's, it's always on the agenda. If someone says, I want to talk about this, it goes on the agenda, that's the practice we've been having. And then if there is, through the discussion, if you see that we have people that want to move forward with it, then it goes forward and that, that is when we start paying our lawyer to draft things for us and craft things. And, and that was how we were controlling costs for the district. So. So if Neola has already drafted it, I guess we don't have to worry about controlling a cost, but perhaps if it's completely new, we wouldn't send it to policy committee? If it's just an update, then our policy committee would check it out? I'm just spitballing here and...
Yeah, or again, we could just disband that policy committee and just bring everything under new business and we can say, hey, here's the Neola policy language that we currently have from their updates and put it on for one month, you know, just as a discussion. If there's anything that resonates with anybody that they want to make some comments on, certainly have that conversation then. We can tweak those, that language and then do a first reading, a second reading and call it done. Just eliminate one of our committees.
I think that makes sense too, because then it prevents, you know, any other board members other than who's in the committee from talking to other people about those changes. So it just puts us at more risk for Open Meeting Act violation.
Would we have the ability to, because I remember in our last policy committee meeting, we made live edits, it took a good chunk of time. So if we did this this way, would we, we would certainly get the policy language ahead of time. Would we be making edits live during our meeting, or would we be sending them to you in advance? Like, how would we envision that working? Because I'm open to this, I just want to understand what we're getting into here.
And again, probably the way we would approach that, anytime we get the Neola policy updates, you know, Bill and I are going to take a look at those and see if there are things that align to what it is that we currently do. If there's something that we don't currently do that's being required of us, obviously we'll need to implement that, but if there are some things, we don't have to accept all of the little update changes that they make. But we can do like we normally do in those Google Docs, just have those, that Google Doc with, you know, the green highlights for the additional language, the red highlights for the language that's being removed and toss that out to the group to review, you know, prior to the meeting. We can have the discussion at the first meeting under new business. And then next meeting, have the first reading and go that direction.
That saves us money too, on another meeting.
Absolutely. And like I said, it helps my calendar, so I don't mind that at all. So with that being said then, we will cancel that December 2nd meeting of the policy committee. I will try and get all of those updates done either this week or next week to include in our board update for the week. That way, everybody's got the Google Doc with all of the updates. What I will share with the group is we've got the Neola updates, and then we also had our school nurses and health techs take a look at the current policies that we have just to make their edits and tweaks based on what their current practices are. So there are just a couple of little things in there that we'll toss out as well, but I'll separate those out for you in the Google Doc itself so that you can see those differences. So you'll have the Neola updates first, you'll have the health tech pieces second.
Just as a reminder too, we do have, I believe in our organizational meeting bylaw, that we do appoint for that board committee or vote or whatnot, so we might need to take a look at that.
We'll put that in the...
Update.
In the update as well.
Yeah.
Yes.
Thanks.
All right. Good?
Okay. Moving on to new business, we have the discussion of House Bill 445. Mr. Heath, can you start us off again on that one?
Sure. Just a couple of things with the release time for religious instruction, just so everybody knows, kind of some of the work that we've done here already. Back, over a year ago, Mr. Hammond actually attended a meeting for us with the LifeWise Academy Group. I believe Lieutenant Governor Huestead was leading that up here in Lake County, so he attended that, got some initial information regarding LifeWise. Over the summer, one of our local pastors, Pastor Ian Neal from Trinity Church over on Johnny Cake Ridge Road, reached out and wanted to meet to discuss LifeWise with me as well. So in August, I sat down with him. He presented me with a lot of the documentation. One of the things that we wanted to look at right away as well, one of the papers that they shared with us was a list of individuals from the community that had an interest in LifeWise being implemented in our schools, with our schools. So there are 90 people on that list. What I wanted to make sure and do is go through and look at exactly which families have students in our district so that we could start to try and identify, okay, what buildings are we talking about? How might this work just from a logistical standpoint, knowing that there was conversation around House Bill 445? With that information, I think we've got a total of 32 students that were captured in that initial list. Eight from the high school, three from Memorial, eight from Shore, four from Ridge, one from Hopkins, two from Morton. You writing all this down, Mr. Wade?
No.
Okay. I'll get it to you later. One from Orchard, one from Fairfax, two from Bellflower, one from Cares, and one from the preschool, based on everything that I was able to capture in our student information system. I believe right now there are three different churches and menor that have connections with a couple of different buildings. One is with Hopkins Elementary, one is with Ridge Elementary, and one is with Memorial Middle School. So that's the information I have right now. And again, you know, just kind of in the background, kind of working through logistically what we might need to consider should House Bill 445 become law as well.
Mr. Heath, could you repeat that? So you said Hopkins, Ridge, and Memorial have churches interested. How many students at Hopkins?
There are...
Are interested.
There's one student at Hopkins right now. There are three at Memorial and four at Ridge, based on what I'm seeing in there.
Okay, thank you. And I think the highest number was eight at the high school?
Eight at the high school and eight at Shore.
Eight at Shore, okay, thank you.
These are people that are affiliated with the churches you're talking about?
These are people that had signed up through that LifeWise piece that wanted to see LifeWise implemented within the menor schools community. So just going off that list and trying to find out where the students were so that we could start to figure out logistics behind some of this. So that's where we landed right now. And I can share some of that information, because that's just some of the stuff that we've been digging through here recently, knowing that we were going to be having the conversation here this evening.
I think I'm going to start the floor with Mrs. Iapolo, because you asked for a discussion for release time and...
Actually, it was me.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I actually had asked for discussion specific to Policy 5223, which I don't know, Kristen, would you be able to pull that up on the screen, since we all kind of received it about a week ago? Could you just, yeah? You probably, do you need to send it to her?
I got it.
Okay. 5223, it's the one with options.
I'll send it to you here, Kristen, it's in a separate document.
Thank you. Just so everybody can see some of the information. But just while she's pulling that up, to touch base on some of the data points that Mr. Heath just discussed, I know a little bit about the LifeWise process. The original intent of putting out something to community members was not a huge push. It was just to see if there was a little bit of interest. So that's not an all-inclusive number. I don't believe that they've sent out any, I know for a fact that they have not reposted, resent out to their congregations, anything. It just started off as a group of about five or six churches that were kind of interested in getting this done, and it was very, you know, hey, will you sign this, to see if they even had interest within the church community to start it. So there was no big giant push for, you know, enrollment. I'll wait until it gets up on the screen, just so... No, you're fine. Thank you so much. Okay, so here is the policy. I had spoken with a few churches in the area. I happened to attend one of them, just out of full transparency, and we are growing. We've got a lot of people who would be interested in this program that have not filled out that link yet, so just to let you know. So...
And that was shared with me when I met with Ian as well. He said, here's the initial list. I'm like, okay, thanks, that gives us a starting point to start looking.
Okay, good. So, and that's just one program, LifeWise. This is not particular to LifeWise. LifeWise is a program that uses this type of policy to, you know, provide the services using this policy. So, long story short, you can be of any religious, have any kind of sincerely held religious beliefs and utilize this policy, it doesn't have to be LifeWise. So just so everybody's on the same page there. This policy was provided to me actually by our attorney, I believe, in July, kind of around the same time when Mr. Heath was having those conversations as well. I poked around and tried to see if Neola had a policy, and they do, and they have different options. So a couple of different things. I had attended a class at OSBA. I know we haven't done our full rundown on what we attended, what we didn't, but I thought this one class was actually fairly interesting. It was talking about how we, you know, choice vouchers are here to stay, is what the class was about, and we need to start becoming school choice. That was their class. They were like, we need to start being school choice, because they were seeing people flee from their school, and they actually have an increase in their enrollment, I believe it was Toledo Schools. So they said, you know, we need to start competing with these parochial schools. We need to work with parents to retain students. And I see this as a way that we can compete. I'll dig in a little bit and a little bit, I'll dig in a little bit and a little bit, wow. I'll dig into the fact that we did have a policy and it was removed when we transferred to Neola. So I'll dig into that in a little bit. But I want to just kind of hit on some points here. So that OSBA class talked a lot about the parent and school relationship and engagement. And, you know, I see this as a way that we can provide without parents having to pull their kids out of our district. If we look at the trends, I've been marking them for the last few years, about homeschooling, private schooling, and our enrollment. And homeschooling, we've seen, just from last year to this year, we've seen an increase of 14%. Private schooling, we've seen an increase of 36% in one year. That's unheard of. We have not had that kind of increase for several years. We've been kind of, you know, a few years ago, we were at 642, then 679, then 644, then 670, and now 914 students. That's a lot, a lot of students. Not to mention our previous levy failed, I think by about 1,000? Am I correct, Mr. Wade?
I tried to block it out, Mrs. Payne, I'd have to look it up.
It was less, like 600? Okay, so either way, our private school students now outweigh what the levy failed by. Our enrollment went down from 6,828 to 6,627. That's been pretty consistent with about a 3% decrease. So I really see this as a way to accommodate and to, like that class said, be school choice. If people are seeking private schools because they feel like they can't retain their right to their religious beliefs, then we need to ensure that they feel comfortable, and a simple policy like this sends a message that we respect their right to their religion. And we support parents in their decision to raise their child with whatever beliefs they see fit. I know we received some emails stating, hey, you know, we don't want this program because our child is going to feel like they're left out, you know. We've had that discussion in reference to the books, and we had parents saying, hey, my kid, you know, we don't want this book in our schools. And the response that we received from even a few board members and people who spoke at the mic was, well, your kid doesn't have to check them out. Well, the same thing applies here. Your child doesn't have to partake in this program. It is a, you know, hands-off policy. So as you can see here, I'll just kind of go over some of this. You need to have parent or guardian consent. The sponsoring entity maintains attendance records and makes them available to the district. They also, they provide and assume liability for the student. The student assumes responsibility for any missed schoolwork. So transportation of students to and from release time instruction is the complete responsibility of the sponsoring entity, so not the schools, the parent, the guardian, and/or the student. The Board of Education, its members and employees are immune, so we are not held liable for any injuries arising from transportation to and from release time instruction. Further, no board funds will be expended for, and no district personnel shall be involved in the provision of religious instruction. Now, we talked about, or we heard, and we received several emails about, well, you know, what about kids who are going during their lunchtime and they don't have the funds for their lunch? I've heard from other places that, you know, and I'm sure we would be the same way, I don't see our lunch lady saying, you can't get your lunch a little early and take it with you, when they know that that child can't afford lunch. Also, I don't see any churches who may be housing programs like this, deny a child lunch. I'm sure they would provide it for them. So those are some points there. These are additional, oops, sorry. You're good, you're good. So these are some additional options. So in high school, students can actually earn up to two units of credit for their coursework completed during the release time instruction. As you could see, these are, I'm not going to read through the whole thing, but these are some of the guidelines that they have to be met for that. And here's a really important part, because I know we heard tonight that, you know, Rose and I agreed to a policy that we have, and we like enforcement of policy that says we can't, you know, force or encourage with outside organizations, you know, in our schools, so participation in our schools. So staff members shall not promote, nor can they discourage participation in release time programs for any religious instructional program. So we can't promote it, we can't, you know, not, we can't discourage it either. So it's a pretty fair policy. Also, when we were with Pepel and Waggoner, we actually had this pretty much exact policy. I know we all received it today from Mr. Heath when I requested it, but we did have a policy. And I'm not sure, I know Maggie and Ginny were assigned to this section, and then it didn't carry over on the spreadsheet where it said like comments, if we were getting rid of a policy, it would put like the policy there and then the new policy, and it would say like comments as to why we were getting rid of it. I looked back at that spreadsheet and I didn't see that. Now, I'm at fault as well, because of course, I approved of hundreds of policies at one time and I didn't catch that we were getting rid of it. So that's also part of my reason as to why I'm proposing it today, because we did have a policy, we didn't have a discussion at the table in front of the public of, hey, we're going to remove this policy that we have and that we've been having since, I think, 2014. And actually, Sharden, Maggie continues to use that same policy, the Neola one right up here. So, you know, I have some questions as to, I guess, why it wasn't brought to the attention of the public. I don't think if it was, we would see, you know, no pushback. I think we would have seen some pushback. Just some points about LifeWise, since somebody else brought it up. They do have some studies where it does show an increase in attendance, decrease in school and from in-school and out-of-school suspensions. They have surveys that show teacher satisfaction with the program, they can see difference in children's behavior. So I just don't see the reason why we wouldn't support this. I think that one of our, I think we have it right in the back up here, one of our visions is encourage strong community partnerships. If you don't want your child doing it, you don't have to enroll them in this. But if other people do, and it'll keep them at our schools so that they're not going to use ed choice vouchers, so that we don't continue to see massive decreases, and then that's going to be reflected at the ballot when people go to cast their ballot if they had to remove their children for that reason, it could negatively impact us. So I just see this as another way of showing the community, we're going to work with them, we support you, we support your parental rights, and allowing, you know, people, folks who want to partake in the programs, let them.
Okay, is anyone else in favor of moving forward with a policy to have religious release time instruction?
I am, but I do have some comments. I just was waiting. Does anybody else have anything?
Go ahead.
Go ahead, go ahead, I don't want to...
I think this is very similar to the previous discussion. If they create the "shall" change in the policy, or I'm sorry, in the law in HB 445, that would be the time to take this up. I'm not aware of anybody ever having utilized this option. I don't, I don't recall any organization offering pullouts during the school day. In a fairly lengthy chat with the folks from LifeWise when we were at the Capitol Conference, I couldn't understand at all why this couldn't be an after-school or before-school program. They were adamant, had to be during the day. Well, we've heard, you know, from people via email and a couple of our speakers this evening, if you bookend time where you've got 40 minutes to get children gathered, coats on, lunches ready, and travel somewhere, even if it's next door to the building, have whatever activities are planned, and then repeat the process, and the school is still going to have to take attendance for who's going. I mean, that, that, we have to know who's coming and going. We have people signing in and out for a dentist appointment. So, and that's a parent or guardian doing it. So there would be responsibilities on the shoulders of office staff, our nutrition services, potentially the school nurse, if you've got students who have medical issues or significant allergies, all of those other variables. If you moved this program to right after school, when a lot of parents are looking for childcare options, that makes so much more sense. It removes a big problem, which is COVID falling behind, focus on the basics. A couple of people spoke about wanting to make sure that we focus on the basics and our core classes. And to me, any class that's graded, that we're providing a highly qualified subject specialist to teach, is core to the student's total instructional program. So, I mean, I'm fine with anybody who wants to participate in any kind of religious training. My children went to the Parish School of Religion, you know, the CCD classes, they used to call them. And those were on Saturday mornings for a time, they were after school. So, this is one program that a well-organized or group is offering, but I have a big problem with it having to be embedded in the school day. It's so limited for what they could offer. Having been a teacher with little folks, yikes. Getting, you know, I lost my mitten, I can't find my, like, oh my goodness. Trying to push that into this very small window is going to be frustrating and of limited value. Doing it after school, if it's important to the parents to have this option, I'm sure that parents would support an after-school option just as readily as doing this during the school day when you'd have to worry about making up missed work as the responsibility of the child. That's never true. That's always on the danger to make sure that the information was shared or the workshop, whatever it might be. So I'm assuming it would just be during lunch and not involving missed work of any kind. But 40 minutes is mighty skimpy to do all those pieces and parts. And, and to get lunch packed, or if the student's buying their lunch, they have to do that transaction. And some of our nutrition services, you know, those, those hard-working folks, they're, they're on a pretty tight turnaround as well. So I don't understand at all why it would have to be during the school day. And as I say, I'm not aware that that policy was ever used for a religious pullout. We've always excused religious observances. You know, so if your mosque, your synagogue, your, whatever your religious tradition might be, you, you might have a special day of celebration, or parents of children who are Jehovah's Witnesses generally don't come to school when we have school parties, because that's inconsistent with their religious beliefs. And so those kids are certainly given an excused absence. But, I have a hard time imagining that this religious pullout would have much of an impact on what you were talking about. This is pain as far as people wishing to homeschool their children or wanting to use Ed Choice vouchers where, you know, they can have a variety of options under a variety of circumstances. So, I have a big problem with this. Just the logistics are crazy. It's after school, I think that's perfectly fine. And then, parents can pick their kids up from that program, and then they have the freedom to have an hour, an hour and a half, whatever it might be then. You're not going to run into all those other problems of trying to take kids off-site for 40 minutes.
Rose, did you want to?
Go ahead, go ahead.
I'm still writing, so actually, I know you had things to say. I just want to write down a few points.
Sure.
Please.
Okay. So first, I just want to say, this is, religion is, this is a constitutional right to practice our religion. Its separation of church and state was intended to provide freedom of religion, not freedom from religion. And it was intended to protect the church from the state, not the other way around. So I just want to state that on the front end. Many schools do allow this. Ginny, I know you spoke with Buddy at the conference. He painted the picture, and this is very, very common, in Ohio especially. And they have reported, those schools have reported, you know, improvements in academic performance, behavior, and mental health. We know enrollment's down, we know Ed Choice vouchers are here to stay, so we have to compete. And I think OSBA, teaching a class on how we have to, I think one of the classes was how to treat schools as a business, or if work appeased the customer, we have to start adjusting. Private schools right now are having open houses this time of year and are heavily recruiting. We will, we have seen the increase in the use of vouchers as we expected, but as you know, birds of a feather flock together, so we should anticipate more and more families moving over to private schools. Right now, we are competitive, our district is competitive academically with our fine arts, CTE, our athletic programs, our new commitment to cracking down on disciplinary issues, the enforcement of the cell phone policy, our SRO initiative, and what is soon to be a mandate to secure safety in restrooms, which is an issue that has concerned many families and community members. So adding this religious time release would check another box for parents when making their choice where to send their kids. We have to compete with private schools now more than ever, and so this is just a step toward making our district more appealing to families who are considering private schools, or perhaps bring families back to our district who had left. If you haven't noticed, as I said before, the landscape of public education is about to rapidly change, and we need to adapt with it. We can be a district that offers parents the best of both public and private education, it's possible. We can become a unique combination of the two. And I believe offering religious time release would give families a reason to stay at Mennor or to choose Mennor over a private school. And it's, parents opt in. It's once a week, and it doesn't cost the district a penny. When we spoke with Buddy, I first met him in LifeWise and learned more about it last year at the conference, and I was really amazed, because a lot of the emails that we got, there was a lot of misunderstanding of what this actually does. And so, and Buddy was really great in explaining and kind of painting a picture. And, you know, it's, it's not, it's not this logistical nightmare as everybody's talking about. Again, once a week, and, you know, this, this would just be a policy saying that we can do it, but the next step would be then having to figure out logistics of it. And so obviously, we're not going to do something that doesn't make sense for each, for our buildings. So, just to, just to make that clear. Just in response, the, when you talk about after-school and weekends, that is not realistic for a lot of families. You know, we have parents who work nights, they work weekends. My daughter is in the high school, and she's in the refuge club, it's after-school, and she's had to miss a number of them, of meetings because of sports, work, you know, doctor's appointments. It's just not feasible. So I think this is a more equitable option, because you, you know, yes, the, the, the perfect scenario would be send your kids to something on the weekends or after-school, but that's just not reasonable. And frankly, they have a right to, to, you know, practice their religion during the school day, like other kids can. LifeWise, just for the, is one example, and it doesn't have to be LifeWise, but they explain this, this is not going to be pulling kids out of reading or math. This is, these are not core classes, and it would not require makeup. I know, you know, I work in schools, especially in the elementary school, library time is grab the first colorful book you can find, and then go and talk and play and goof around. So, you know, I would be okay if my daughter missed lunch, recess, and library, or, you know, whatever order. So there's ways around that we can make it so it's not just 40 minutes, because it is obviously very tight. And, you know, LifePoint talked, or LifeWise, talked about how, you know, sometimes we're eating. So the lesson that they teach makes it fun, and they're all eating together, or they're doing art projects together. They're incorporating activity, recess, so like the kids, if they, if it is recess, they're not missing physical activity, they're making sure to incorporate that in there. So I think that's important. You know, I just, I just think, we, we, this is one more thing that we could do to say, we're doing something different, we're listening to the community, so that when we go and ask them for more money, they feel, okay, they're being heard, we're making changes. And, you know, this frankly could help our reputation, because right now, we make decisions up here that lean very left. And we all know by the election results that that is not, does not reflect our community. We can no longer call this a divided community. We're not divided. We're, there's a mandate now, and it's, what was the percentage of?
57 to 43.
Yeah, I mean, to me, that, that speaks volumes. So this is just one more thing. And again, if you don't want your kid to participate, you don't have to participate. I was told that with the books. I was told that, you know, someone emailed me saying that they're, what about the kids who are sitting there and watch their classmates leave for this, and they're not part of it? Are they going to feel left out? Well, that was my concern with the library, and I ended up having to take my kid off of the, our red light, green light. Then because she was devastated that she had, was the only kid that had to leave library without a book. What I would say to the, to that, you guys told me that's just part of it, you know, and we adapted. We have students, you know, my daughter always says, I want to leave when the kids go and gets extra help. How come I don't get to get picked out? Kids are getting pulled left and right for, 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 if you've been in elementary school, you know, that's, that's very common. So I don't think it's going to, the worries that this would make kids feel bad if they're not going, I don't think this is going to cast a light on that, the way some people assume. You know, I'm trying to think of some of the other arguments. Yeah, another thing is, you know, I know there are people that don't practice religion, and that's fine. We were told when we had this book discussion about certain ideologies that parents do not have the authority or right to dictate another parent's choice for their child. So that cannot be a reason that we don't have this policy because of what another parent. We were told that you don't, your kid doesn't like a book about, you know, a dad molesting his daughter, then don't, your kid doesn't have to read it. Same thing here. If you don't practice, or you, that's not your cup of tea, that's fine, you don't have to sign up for it. But I think it's important to have this as an option, and, you know, this is the new, the new way. In the past, public education and religion, two separate things, but times are changing, so.
Kristin, sorry to bother you again. Would you mind bringing up that slide I sent you? So just a couple of things. Slide five, please. Is that the right one? The one with the graph on it? Whoa. Keep going, there you go. Thank you. So this has been brought up a couple of times, it's been brought up in our legislator meetings, and I just have to put it back up again, because I keep hearing that students and families are leaving our district in droves for private schools and home schools. That is not the case. So I would like to correct the record once again. These are the numbers as of the summer that Mr. Wade and Mr. Heath shared with me, did confirm that they are correct. We're staying pretty flat in both areas. Just wanted to point that out. Also, I want to point out, because this is, I've heard it a couple of times already, and I feel like I have to say, the numbers from the 2024 election with regard to the presidential election are virtually the same as they were in 2020. We have a 57-42-ish split in 2020. It was virtually the same, 56-43. So not much changed, so whatever perception of a mandate is, I just don't agree with. Thank you, Kristin, that's all I needed for that. So a couple of things, I don't agree with jumping ahead to create a policy until we have clarity on the law. I think that's a, sort of a foolish way to put the cart before the horse. We need to see this law pass first, we need to understand its full implications and its final forms. We need to go through things with our administrators, with our attorney. There's just too much to think through, it's, this is not the thorough way to do it. So, if and when this law passes, bill passes into law, at that time, we address it, we create the policy that we are legally required to pass, and that'll be that. For me, it's that simple. I do want to make a couple of distinctions between LifeWise, because I'm hearing a lot about LifeWise today, and House Bill 445, and the policy that we had up here earlier. It says nothing about partnering with any third-party entities. What it's actually about is the parent's right to pull the child from the district. And I did check with other school districts who have this policy enacted right now. And it is entirely on the parent to arrange things, to pick them up, to take them out. Partnering with a third party is not part of this bill. I want to make that very clear. And secondly, I also want to make a distinction between practicing and expressing your religion and instruction. Those are different things. We welcome, as Ms. Jesslyn pointed out, we welcome the opportunity for students to express and practice their sincerely-held religious beliefs in school. We have no problems with that, we've been doing that for years. Instruction is what's dealt with in this latest legislation. That is a very different thing. So I wanted to make that clear. I don't have anything else to say on this. I'm not interested in doing a policy until it is law. Thank you.
My basic thoughts on that is that, right now, we have legislation in both the House and the Senate that is changing, the proposal is to change the words from, they may have a release time policy, to shall. And, it, I think it's also, it's premature. Neither has passed out. If it does, we will follow the law and we will create policy. But I don't have a desire to create a policy when we just have an opportunity to with May. And that isn't because I'm not religious. It's not because I am against religious teaching. It's because as a public school, our priority has to be educating the students. And as a teacher, I know that we use every minute to do this. That even includes lunch and recess, quite honestly. We have social skills groups at lunchtime, often teachers use remediation for recess. I don't think that doing this aligns with our strategic plan where we were trying to get physical activity in for students on a daily basis. This policy would be loss of educational time. We would be utilizing staff for transitions. We would need, while we may not be liable when they're traveling or once they leave the building, there is a transition time as they're coming in and we're doing attendance, and they're coming back and doing attendance, that our staff would be responsible for organizing and mandating that. And these are people that already have busy jobs. They have other things to do. I don't know if we're using multiple groups that come in, that they're all on the same day, so this could be happening all the time. all on the same day, so this could be happening all the time. The policy that is before us, the Neola policy, doesn't say anything about duration and frequency of the release time. I know that Life Wise utilizes one hour a week. One hour a week would be more than our lunch and recess time. So we would be missing instructional time. And then on top of that, that would be door-to-door, I'm assuming, one hour. So they still have that, you know, 10 minutes to get there and do attendance, and 10 minutes to come back and do attendance, and then get into the class. We're losing precious instructional time. It doesn't align with our strategic plan. Without a mandate from the law to put this into place, I have no interest in moving it forward.
I'd like to, if everybody's spoken, I'd like to go a second time. Just had some additional points. First, Ms. Marchaza, you, your data did not include this year. So the jump that I spoke about, the thirty-six percent, is because of data that I received this year for, for private schools. It went from six hundred and seventy last year, which is what you had, to nine hundred and fourteen this year.
Did that come from our?
It, it did. It came from Missy. Yeah.
Okay. I'm going to verify that. Thank you.
I could send you the email as well, if you would like.
I'll contact Missy. Thank you.
Yeah, no problem. So just, you know, your data did not include that, which is why you have different information. I think a jump of two hundred and forty-four students in one year to private schools is a pretty big jump. So just to address that. Also, just a couple of different points. I know we heard about, you know, Life Wise, they do have three hundred and, I think, twenty-two, they're in three hundred and twenty-two schools. Now, I'm not saying that's just a simple reason to jump on the bandwagon and, and do it. I think it just fits. We had a policy, it was basically silently removed, without a discussion on it with the public, to make them aware that we were removing the policy when we switched over to Neola. And I think, you know, it, it would be wise for us to choose this policy to appeal to our constituents and our taxpayers and parents who, like the one who challenged the book last year for, I think it was kindergarten through fifth grade, it was, it might have been this year, I don't even remember. But it was the, the book that talked about Jazz Jennings as a hero, and talked about how there's more than two genders. And that, that mother felt like her, you know, not only are we not accounting for her beliefs, we were actively pushing against her religious beliefs. And so she removed all four of her kids from our district, and they're now going to a private school. That's not just anecdotal evidence, because we do have the data to support that we had two hundred and forty-four others, you know, four students leave our district as well. So, you know, we do have some data to prove that people are removing their kids because we, they feel like we're pushing against their beliefs. I just want to remind, there were some comments, I think, earlier today that talked about Westerville, and how they actually rescinded their, their Neola policy. They actually had a levy that failed right after. So just as something to keep in mind. You know, I just think, I'm disheartened to see such pushback for a policy that would allow parents to keep their kids in our school. It would, it would send a message to the community that we value their parenting, their, we value what they value, even if we don't align with it, even if we don't agree with it. And I think that we're making a really unwise decision to say, well, we're just going to wait until the law tells us to do it. Because right now, the law tells us we can. Why do these people want to do it? Because they can. So if the law says they can do it, and we have a, you know, had a policy that said they can do it, that's why people are doing it, you know? They want, they want their children to have their sincerely held religious beliefs honored. And taking something like lunch and recess, let's say library, I know a lot of folks use library. If you're using, let's say, Life Wise as an example, the kids are still reading. They're reading the Bible. They're, they're reading. There's still an aspect of school and education. Just because it's not in the educational facility, it doesn't mean they're not being educated. They're being educated, but just not something, and as you saw with high school, they can get two credit hours. Something that aligns with everybody here. You know, just, it's just not something that aligns with everybody here. So those are my points. I, I respect the board's decision, but I don't think it's a wise decision. I actually would like to motion for a first reading tonight, including the option, at least that we have a vote on it.
I had something further on this. It wasn't just Westerville, but Bowling Green, Huron, Gehanna, Jefferson, and Medina have all rescinded their policies. So I'd be interested in knowing whether it was a logistical frustration, or what the cause was, that there must have been some complications presented by this. And I'm back to my original argument, which was, is, that if this is important to parents, then taking advantage of an after-school option, I can't believe that it wouldn't be at one, one day a week, or you could have whatever frequency you wish, but that one day a week would be impossible to, to fit into a family's plan when this is so valuable. This clearly, you're mentioning sincerely held beliefs, and, and many of us have that same dedication to religious training for our children. I made sure that my kids got to their PSR class every week, and that was throughout the school year. And I know the Lutheran folks have their Sunday morning, Sunday school. The Methodist families have their preparation for confirmation, as well as their Sunday school program. Bible school, or Bible, summer Bible school, vacation Bible school is what I meant to say, is offered. So that if we had this available after school, whichever night a week, it would be perhaps a help to parents who are looking for additional childcare coverage, especially if they're working. So I don't think it washes that it has to be during the school day, where it creates the maximum amount of disruption and potentially learning loss, and doesn't align with our strategic plan. I would be fine with whomever, but it's curious that there aren't any other groups. There's this one. I don't know that much about them, but I do know the gentleman I spoke to is from Gehanna. And he said they didn't have it at that school, or that district didn't have it. That, wow, if he wasn't able to pitch the value of it to his own kid's school, maybe there's, you know, some downside to it in terms of just the logistics. I'm not judging content. I'm just saying how that would impact all the adults responsible for those children leaving in the middle of the day. And if you had kids at the high school, I don't know when you would take them from the high school. Their, their demands on their time are significant.
Some of them don't even have lunch.
Yeah. Kids are eating as early as 10 o'clock in the morning.
I have a quick point of order, because I made a motion, and then Rose seconded it. So I just think that that brings that motion then to the floor. So just as a quick, I don't know if anybody heard Rose. She did second my motion.
I didn't second it.
I didn't hear. I didn't hear that.
I heard, no. I had, I had Annie's first.
Okay. We have a motion on the floor. Is there any discussion?
I'm just going to let, you know, to Jenny, Gehanna, he didn't have it at his school. Well, perhaps he has a school board in Gehanna that didn't listen to the people. So that's all I'm going to say there. I don't think that's an indication of it not being something that the community wants.
I don't want to interrupt you, but we did have, at least one of the emails said, if you do this, I'm pulling my kids out.
If we do what?
If we enact this religious release time.
Yeah.
That they would withdraw their kids from the district.
Well, we know we get that on the, with the books. We've, it's coming from both sides, so.
So I don't know that you can make a hard and fast cause and effect. And I think the studies that were referenced by the fellow from Life Wise, did you get the information, Mrs. Cook, some actual data?
So they did give me a book and a reference to a study. Not a peer-reviewed study. It was a study that they did where they interviewed teachers that had students that went to Life Wise. So supporters, supporters of Life Wise. So not, not a scientific study, but a, a study nonetheless. You know, and we did spend quite a bit of time, I spent quite a bit of time at OSB speaking with the people from Life Wise. And again, I have, it's not that I really have a problem with any of their teaching. They seem like nice people. It is really for me, losing instructional time and the resources that it would encumber in our district, because it, it is a loss of, of student time. And it is, it does take people in, that, that would then need to do a job to make this happen. And, and I'm just not for that. But we do have a motion on the floor. We had a motion to, to bring this to a first reading, and, and Rose seconded it. Is there any more discussion?
Yeah, I just wanted to finish. So it should be noted, we, part of our strategic plan was, was battling this, the emotional crisis our kids are. We, we sat down and appealed to three state, you know, two state reps and a state senator. How can we help our kids who are in crisis? Well, giving them hope and giving, allowing something like that is, is a part of our strategic plan that would fulfill that. And, you know, again, this is just a policy that says May, and then we figure out the logistics to see if it makes sense. And nobody's talking about losing instructional time. And, you know, again, so we, we know from what bill just presented, we are going to be asking for more money, and it costs a lot of money to put it up. And I'm not supporting it if we don't start making major changes.
I would agree with that statement. I also, I also think, you know, Mrs. Cook, you, you guys have this policy in Chardon. So do you disagree with having it where you work?
We don't have anyone coming in and using religious release time.
But you do have the policy. So that's the same thing that we could have. We could have the policy, and then you, you have to meet certain criteria in order to use it. So just a point there. I just, I agree with Rose. I think we need to start making some changes. If we don't make any changes, I could not support getting behind a levy if we don't start kind of trying to work with the community. And based on the election results, I don't think we currently are. I think we're, we're making decisions that are far from what the community is valuing, so.
I would like to make a motion.
Can I get clarification? Mrs. Payne, your motion for a first reading on what?
The first reading on the five-two-two-three Neola policy, including the options.
Thank you.
I would like to make a motion to postpone this indefinitely.
I'll second that.
It's on record, at least. Any discussion?
Please call the roll.
Hold on one second.
Which motion are we rolling?
Postponing.
Just a quick point, that our election results in Mennar in 2020 pointed one way, and we still didn't make any changes, and here we are again. You guys are doubling down.
You know, I'll make an additional point, since you're continuing to go back and forth. I, I find it deeply distressing that you two are essentially holding hostage our levy to get something that you want. And I just, I'm, it makes me very worried for the future of this board, its ability to work together, and the future of our district. That's all I'm going to say.
That's not at all what we're saying, but that's the rhetoric you guys have to use. We're saying it's expensive, and you talk about, you know, being fiscally responsible. It's expensive to put it on. Who would put it on expecting a different result when you've made no changes? That's insane.
We can have this discussion at another time.
Wait, wait, no, you can't interrupt. Wait.
We have a motion and a second on the floor.
Mrs. Cook, I'm still talking about the discussion.
I already called for discussion, and then I asked for the roll to be called. So we need to move ahead.
No, you didn't. Wait, we still, you just allowed Mrs. Marchaza to speak. I get to speak. You don't get to make that decision. That's not fair. You can't allow her to speak and me not speak. Excuse me, nobody, nobody is speaking with you right now? I'm sorry. Why are you not gaveling her? Why are you not gaveling her?
Mrs. Payne, what would you like to say?
I just want to address those ad hominem attacks that were just made on Rose and I and our character. I don't have children in the district, which I get thrown at me all the time. I still put in the hours, the effort, because I care. I care. This is my, I'm an alumni of Mennar. I care about other people's kids. Those kind of attacks have no place in this board. And that is exactly why we're in the position we're in right now.
An ad hominem attack is an attack on character.
Which you just did.
I attacked your actions and your words.
No, you just did a personal attack.
I'm done.
Which you've done before.
All right. Please, let's call this meeting back to order. We have a motion on the table to move this policy to first reading. We have a second. We have a motion to suspend indefinitely, and a second. Mr. Wade, can you please call the roll?
Ms. Cook?
Yes.
Ms. Marchaza?
Yes.
Ms. Ayavolo?
No.
Ms. Jesslyn?
Yes.
Ms. Payne?
No.
Motion to postpone indefinitely passes three to two.
Okay. We will now move on. I wanted to bring up another issue in new business that I saw at OSBA, and then we can talk about things that we saw at OSBA. One of the things that I saw was actually a vendor. And I don't typically get super impressed with the vendors, but I was taken by this group. They're called START, School Transportation Active Threat Response Training. And their job is to mitigate risk, elevate student safety, and improve driver retention. And it is a training to improve safety on school buses. This, the program is, an eight-hour program, is four hours, classroom-based, which would incorporate our SSO, SRO, custodians, cafeteria workers, bus drivers, really anyone, because it's unlimited. You don't pay per person. And that would be four hours of training, teaching them to kind of threat assess and notice things. It is created by a retired police officer, and the people that work are retired police officers, current active-duty police officers, and also a Secret Service member. So highly-trained individuals. There are several local districts that have taken advantage of this. Chagrin Falls, Shaker Heights, Bedford, Chardon, Kenton, with really some great results. And I think that it's something that we could look at and discuss, and I'd like to have our administrators look at it because the four, there's four hours of classroom training, and then there's four hours of hands-on. And the four hours of hands-on would be at our bus drivers. And our bus drivers are often our first line of defense. So our bus drivers, they're with the kids every day, sometimes for years. They understand patterns. They understand when a kid is off. They might be the first person that sees them in the morning, and the last one at night. And what that four hours of training in the buses is, in the parking lot, they're driving around with the bus, they'll shoot a blank, they'll have, they'll act out scenarios. What if somebody comes up to you and says so-and-so has a gun in their bookbag, or something like that? They teach them how to respond quickly to be able to practice the threat assessment and to, to get help. And it can save lives. So I just think it's an excellent piece for us to investigate a little bit and see if it's the right fit for our district. And I know that our bus drivers do receive training, but this training is really very specific to being a bus driver, and I think it could be very valuable. So I'd just like to pass that on. And if anyone else, I went to several other OSBA sessions. If anyone wants to talk about their sessions, I was grateful for the opportunity to attend. I went to sessions on parental rights and K-12 education. I went to one that was very interesting on advocating for dollars and cents in public education. And they highlighted the importance of meeting with our legislators, formulating testimony, and they focused on fair school funding. There was an excellent one out of Mason City called the Experiential Learning Program, and it was run by students, which I thought was really great for our strategic plan, because it worked on, highlighted it worked on, highlighted work-centered training, and it was also student-led. The goal of their district is that every student has at least one job shadow or an internship before they graduate. And often those internships, because they're longer periods of time, would go in the summer after school, and it's all student-led. It's the last period of the day, they have elected students that are leaders, and those leaders run a website that creates, they work with alumni to create opportunities to shadow, they have an extensive alumni network. In addition to shadowing, they do internships, paid internships, they network for jobs in the future. It was an excellent-run program. I don't want to go through every single thing. I also went to addressing behaviors by students with disabilities, connecting school board standards and student achievement, which outlined a board's self-assessment procedure for boards to identify their strengths and weaknesses and create goals to improve board operations, which I thought could be something to really help us. It provided clarity for advancing student learning goals. I went to a board member's role in budget planning, which really talked about, more of a deeper dive into budgets and being the voice of the community and how to be able to ask questions with that. And then, of course, our lovely student achievement sessions, where we had our students that Mrs. Jesslyn highlighted today. And then finally ended the conference with no cell bell-to-bell, which was really excellently done by Mrs. Iapolo and Mrs. Payne.
Jump in next. So, this was my first conference, and also first opportunity to serve as the delegate for the Assembly for the Legislative Platform, where we basically all go and vote on what we want to be included on OSBA's platform, for which they advocate on our behalf. So, just as an update to report back out, we had voted as a board on a couple of amendments that were going to be added to the platform for consideration. The first one was to allow districts to charge for labor costs directly associated with the perceiving and fulfilling public records requested, requests, excuse me. We did not decide to support this, so that is how I voted, of course. We were in the minority. That actually passed by quite a landslide. So, that is going to be incorporated in next year's legislative platform. The amendment to include the clause about requiring school tax levy money, which has been voted upon, to be used for the funding of schools, be exempt from TIFs, Tax Increment Financing, as well as CRAs. And then, of course, we had voted to support this, but also add the RIDS as well. So, that was all actually done and then approved. So, that one will be added to the platform for 2025 as well. In the meantime, OSBA will remain, for the remainder of the year, and they'll be out there advocating for the full phase-in of the Fair School Funding Plan, the updating the base cost inputs for the formula, and including ESCs in that formula, and updating transportation weights for transporting non-public and charter school students. I'm not going to go through all of my sessions. I'll just say a couple of the sessions I attended. One was on community engagement, which was awesome by our neighbors in Beachwood. They had a lot of great ideas on how to, you know, board members could be more accessible and visible to parents, and kind of just doing, taking stock of like who attends our events, and more importantly, who isn't, and why that's happening, and how we can involve those folks who are not as engaged. Listening circles for parents, community input sessions, quarterly discussions, which we kind of already do with our Cardinal Cafes. So, and then start tracking the new folks who begin engaging to see what we're doing right. So, that was really fascinating. I would love to connect with them for some more ideas on how we could, since it's part of our strategic plan, to improve community engagement. I attended a great session about dialogue, ever the optimist here, and learned, of course, that it's important to remain solution-oriented, and that dialogue training for board members and admins and teachers could help us become good examples for students. And we could even workshop these trainings with students, and really just be the models that we all should be for our kids. And then I attended some sessions about gender issues, the enforcement of Title IX. I will just highlight Loper versus Bright, which did away with a Chevron doctrine. I'm not going to get into all of the details, but basically know that Loper-Bright is going to have an enormous impact on schools. It's changing the way federal agencies are able to make decisions about following the law. So, that's going to mean big changes across the board. That was a Supreme Court decision. And again, just to reiterate, the laws around gender identity, we don't have a lot of answers on case law yet. A lot of it is conflicting. It's coming from multiple different states, including Ohio. I mentioned the thing about standing. There's, that actually, that issue is going to be considered to be taken up by the Supreme Court of the United States, and we should know by Christmas whether or not they decide to take that case on and change the issue of standing in these cases, because that could be a momentous change as well. And then there, yeah, lots of other case law issues. I'll just reiterate once again, all very fluid. We need to stay in tight communication with our admins and our folks in the schools and in the buildings to really understand and have a good picture of what's going on. And again, just thank you for the opportunity to attend. It was such a great learning experience. Learned a lot. I will talk about a couple of the things. I won't go through all of it, but just kind of give you guys a heads-up of what I did. So, the class that I was referring to earlier was called Shift to Customer Service Focus. It was by Toledo Public Schools. They are actually seeing an increase in their enrollment since they've shifted their model over to being a customer service focus. So, some of their points that they had made was, why shift to customer-focused models? Because of declining enrollment, public perceptions, staffing shortages, budget reductions or concerns. Their second point was, we have, we're going to see a changing in the landscape of public education, which I think you heard Rose talk about a little bit tonight. They actually said, I don't even want to hear anymore about Ed Choice. I don't want to hear about it. We should be school choice. And that's when they went into kind of their whole process of, that the student family are our primary customers. So, working with them, and then also, there's a couple other points in that, but, gosh, that one had a lot. So, then I went to another class called Addressing the Needs of the Whole Black Student, which was interesting. I learned a couple things from there. They did talk about a couple different things that they're doing over in Twinsburg. That one, I actually did leave a little early from as well, when the speaker, the teacher, she brought in her students from Twinsburg, just like six of them, and they were in the class. It was towards the end. But when she said that she tells her students across the board that they better not turn into a Candace Owens, I found that very offensive, and so I just quietly got my stuff and left. There are definitely some biases in some of these courses, which I wish now taught, you know, have taught a class myself at OSBA. There's no, there's nothing that tells you as the teacher to not discuss those issues, and to kind of have more of a centrist opinion on things, politically at least. Then I went to the gender issues in the law. I went to see the, obviously, the kids that we showed on the screen earlier tonight. They did a wonderful job. They were so good. And then Rose and I did the, you know, no cell bell-to-bell. We did some of the, I don't know if you were in this one, the legislative update stuff. And, yeah, the no cell bell-to-bell was actually, I don't really talk about it a lot up here, but I am on the executive board with the OSBCC.org, Ohio School Board Constitutional Coalition. So, I've been on that board since the inception of it, three years ago. We have a really good team from all across Ohio, and we kind of pulled Rose in because she had proposed the cellphone topic early last year, and said, hey, you know, we kind of want to propose this. And we worked with Mr. Heath to get some data as well, and so I thought it went pretty well. I was happy to see the board show up and the administrators. That was fun, to see smiling faces in the audience. But, yeah, that was, it was, you know, you take what you can from it, and the things that I disagreed with, I just wasn't going to sit there for some of those comments.
I was able to attend a number of sessions, two that stood out. I aligned with our changes in our behavior policy and kind of how we've been looking at that and trying to formalize and make clear, to standardize kind of some of the categories. So, management of student behavior across varied settings was one, and the other was addressing student behaviors in light of special education considerations, because those are very strictly governed by the law, Mrs. Cook's life. But in both of those, it was very interesting to listen to whether misbehavior or infractions were attributable to a disability versus just a choice that the student made, and how moving a student to a different setting, and how to navigate placement disagreements with parents, was a complex set of challenges. And I found both of those very helpful, that one was by Ennis Britton's Law Firm, and the other was Pepel &amp; Wagner. So, appreciate having the chance to do that and hit all those other highlights in no cell bell-to-bell.
I'll be quick for the, because it's getting late. I just wanted to thank the taxpayers for paying for us to go here. It really is nice to be able to go, not only to sit in on some of these sessions, but to meet other board members and kind of network and exchange ideas and struggles. My favorite part were the students, seeing the students there from all over, but especially for Manner. And the fact that I got to be part of the presentation, that was very cool. And given the time slot, I expected it to be kind of empty, so, yeah, it was, I was happy to see that we had a little bit of a crowd, and it was wonderful that all of our administrators and the entire board stayed to sit in it. So, I was, I appreciate that. I do wish it would be, their sessions were, would be a little more balanced, but, you know, I'm glad we get to go, and I definitely learned a lot. I'll leave it at that, so, because it's late, 11 o'clock.
Next, we have hearing of the public on any topic.
Our first speaker is Gil Martello.
Good evening, Mr. Heath, Mr. Wade, and members of the board. Given Mr. Wade's presentation, let's cut right to the chase. Two weeks ago, we had a national referendum. President-elect Donald Trump framed a presidential debate primarily around national security, inflation, and the excesses of the political left's woke agenda. The election resulted in a trifecta win for Republicans, sweeping the presidency and both houses of Congress. The election resoundingly reputed the political left's ideals, so much so that Ohio State Senator Sherrod Brown lost his 30-year seat to Republican Bernie Moreno. Tip O'Neill once said, "All politics are local." Board members, I have repeatedly stated over the past three years, this school district and its policies are at odds with the majority in this community. Preliminary estimates indicate Manner voters favor the Republican ticket in this 60-40 split. Of course, this flies in the face of this board's continued left-leaning bent on many policy decisions. I'm asking my peers here tonight to take a page from the national media and the Democrat Party. Please reflect on the election results and what they portend. Remember, the most unified and diverse voting bloc ever came together and clearly stated the new direction our country must now take. Let's retire the name-calling and move forward, like the rest of the nation is doing now. Board members, you have the power to unite this community. If you choose to, we must take the following steps. Remove the few books from the school library that are patently offensive to many. Allow our young ladies the privacy in their locker rooms and restrooms, and ensure the school environment does not favor one ethnic, racial, or sexual orientation group over the other. The halls of the Manner School District cannot serve as billboards for indoctrinating lifestyles or choices that some parents find objectionable. If you take swift and decisive action on the aforementioned items, my instincts tell me the next levy placed in the ballot would pass. Doing anything other than what I have suggested will likely jeopardize the fiscal fate of the district. Watching this board meeting tonight reminds me of an old adage. When you've dug a hole deep enough you can no longer climb out of, maybe you ought to think about putting down the shovel. Thank you and have a good night.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Lynn Mzika.
Sorry to be so slow. Madam President, members of the board, Mr. Heath and Mr. Wade, thank you again for the opportunity to address you this evening. This week is Ohio Public Education Appreciation Week. This week celebrates public education and honors individuals who make a difference in ensuring every child receives equality of education. And during this week, I was shocked that any school board member would threaten to vote against a school levy, not based on the need for the levy or what's best for the school, but because they didn't get their way on a specific piece of legislation. Shame on you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is John Sanford.
Members of the board, Mr. Wade and Mr. Heath, thank you for this opportunity to speak. John Sanford, live on Parker Drive. You've seen me before. And I wanted to address a couple of things, and they just keep resonating in my mind. But Mr. Martello really summed it up, and so did Rose. You said, things are changing, and you're right, they are. We're going to go from the quote, "woke" unquote, left-leaning agenda, where everyone is cared for, everyone is valued, everybody is seen as having legitimacy, as they say, liberty and justice for all, and that pledge that some of you mouth dishonestly at the beginning of the meetings. Liberty and justice for all means we are all okay. And if you don't want to see your name on a lawsuit, talk about what will happen when your first trans kid suicides in your school because of the things you're going to pass. Simply stated then, the new law, if it passes, is if it's signed, dictates bathrooms, not policy. And we pay administrators to write procedures to respond to volatile situations. We know that transgender issues are volatile, and the administrators have the task of writing procedures to respond to that. Policies are rigid, they don't respond quickly, you're setting yourself up for failure if you try to make that a policy. And so, finally, what we're getting then is we're getting a tremendous amount of political posturing, pandering to the right-wing agenda now. And congratulations, you'll have that for four years. Maybe.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Tina Perkins.
Annie and Rose, you're presenting multiple false equivalencies in regards to RTRI. Annie, you have no clue why the Westervilles' school levy failed. You're just making speculations. You are both going so hard for kids to leave school when just months ago
Could you please, please address the president.
You were pushing for removal of SEL curriculum because you want us to go back to basics because of our school report card scores. You're spinning in circles because it's something you both want. Let me remind you, this is a public school, period. Let me remind you, this is a public school, period. I don't care if we compete with periocal schools. They are apples and oranges. RTRI is not a substitute for private schools. And in regards to the bathroom bill, Rose, you said earlier that you don't think it's right to protect...
Mrs. Perkins, please address the board president.
...the transgender students in Manner. Let that sink in. You and Annie have no business sitting on a public school board when you do not support all students.
I'm sorry, I need you to address the president, not them directly.
I know why Manner has this bullying problem. It's because parents and the adults in their lives teach intolerance and harmful ideologies onto their children. When you have parents in the community who offer to buy flowers to students who have physically harmed another, there's a problem. That mindset should not be what Manner Schools stands for, given our history with bullying. Hate is taught. Adults should never be condoning violence of any kind. We need to model the behavior we want our kids and future generations to emulate. Also, I'd like to make it known that our high school students know about these meetings, and they talk about them at school. They know who's in their corner and who's not, and the ones who are not wear crosses around their neck. That's sad.
Thank you.
Our last speaker is Jaclyn McCormick.
We need a bathroom policy because of safety for our students. We, unlike other schools, have had physical altercations in girls' restrooms. Waiting for Neola puts our children at risk now, and for what reason? The community would only benefit from swift action to protect their children. As a board, your track record has proven that getting anything done for our schools takes y'all literally years. Marchaza's worries about lawyer fees to create policy to protect our girls in their private spaces is disgraceful. The community has spoken loudly on this issue through the recent election and the failure of your past levy. If safety is your number-one priority, why would you not support the fees incurred to protect all students? Children identifying as something other than their biological sex entering the opposite-sex restrooms has proven to put them in danger, as well as the possibility of the girls being at risk for males entering that may not actually identify as transgender, causing anxiety and fear erupting into physical violence. This law is just going back to what was normal five or six years ago. So if a boy went into the bathroom back then, what would have been the disciplinary action for that before this twisting of Title IX? The reluctance of this board to act proactively for the safety of our children will certainly be an issue when the community goes to vote on your future levy.
Thank you. We do not have an executive session on the agenda. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second. Mr. Wade, please call the roll.
Ms. Payne.
Yes.
Ms. Jesslyn.
Yes.
Ms. Iapolo.
Yes.
Ms. Marchaza.
Yes.
Mr. Cook.
Yes.
Meeting is adjourned at 11:12 PM.